And tonight, what I would like to do is offer a meditation. And we're gathered here tonight. It is a great evening. It's beautiful outside. A day that the Lord has made. And we can all celebrate that. And there's a lot we have to tackle tonight, a lot to get through. But it's going to be OK. And we're going to take a deep breath and just meditate tonight. And just actually acknowledge the great things that we can about Apex and its surrounding area. So if you would, join me in the meditation. Thank you. If you're able, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So if you haven't already, if you plan to speak tonight, public forum or public hearing, if you would, make your way to my right and sign up on the appropriate sheet so we can acknowledge you at that time. And with that, we'll move right into our presentations. I want to move along tonight. We've got a healthy agenda, so we'll move right along. So I'd like to call on Allison Coltrane for presentation number one.
Good evening. I'm not Allison, but I would like to introduce Allison to you because you have not yet gotten to meet her. She is our new long-range transit planner. She's actually been with the town since November. We're really excited to have her join the planning department. Allison comes to us from Orange County. Before coming to the town, she worked as the transportation services manager there, where she led service planning for three fixed routes as well as demand response service. Allison also has grant and contract management experience. It's been great to get to know her over the last six months, and I'm looking forward to having you get to meet her as well. I'll turn it over to Allison.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so I'm just going to provide you with some brief transit updates since coming on board. This is an overview of what we'll be covering. First is Go Apex Route 1, regional routes, transportation demand management, wait transit work plan, the metropolitan transportation work plan, and grants that we're currently seeking. Starting with Go Apex Route 1, we are in the phase of finalizing the bus stops for all locations. We did have to remove two stops. We've removed Olive Chapel Road stop, and we removed that because we were not able to reach an agreement with Olive Chapel Elementary to have a stop in front of them. We did add a stop on Kelly Road at Evening Star Drive to replace that stop. And we are proposing a removal of the interior stop at Beaver Creek Commons, I mean Beaver Creek Crossings. And I will go into depth about that in the public hearing number one. We do have license agreements that we have on schedule to come onboard. The first one is Olive Chapel Professional Park. That one's looking very favorable. We're just working with our legal department to finalize that. The next one is Beaver Creek Crossings. They do have two exterior stops that are already in place. One is in the right-of-way, but there is one that is not in the right-of-way, and we do need a licensing agreement to maintain that for future incidents. Next, we have NCDOT's right-of-way and bid package review. We actually just received our LAP agreement, so we're just awaiting comments, and then we can move forward with that. And that should be completed in the summer of 2021. After that is done, we can move into the construction phase. We have about 40 bus stops on Go Apex Route 1, and that is anticipated to have a six-month duration, and that starts in the fall of this year. Lastly, we'll have a starter service in the spring of 2022. Going into our transportation demand management, it's an annual grant that is administered by Triangle J Council of Governments. FY21 was our first year. It does fund a portion of my position. The program is meant to promote commuter options and alternative commuting, so transit, bike walking, and carpool and vanpool. The Apex TDM program is there to promote Go Apex Route 1 as well as all of the Triangle TDM initiatives. Going into FY22, we did submit an application. We have heard back from them since that time, and it has been approved. We just are responding to comments from the Oversight Committee. Going into the grants that we're currently seeking, we have the Community Development Block Grant, which is in partnership with Wake County. It's proposing six bus stops improvements. They all will have amenity pads. Some will get shelters and other amenities like trash reciprocals. The big thing about the Community Development Block Grant is the pedestrian connection that you see right here on the right. It's James Street and 55, and it will connect it so you are able to access that bus stop and go along 55. Next is the Bloomberg Asphalt Art Grant. We are seeking this. It awards up to $25,000. And what we are doing is partnering with the Public Arts Committee and Citizens for Apex to revitalize it, well, put art designs on the asphalt of 12 bus stops. So while you're riding the bus, you can have a rolling art tour and guide yourself around the town. And regional routes and projects. First, starting with Go Triangle, Route 305 has started their expansion to Holly Springs. The next expansion will be in August of 2021. And that is just the expansion from Raleigh to Apex, not to Holly Springs. It does include all-day service and weekend service as well. Also, Route 311, it has been suspended, and it's still currently suspended, and they're hoping to bring that online in August of 2021 as well. Next, moving into Go Carry, we have the Apex Carry Express. That came online January of this year, and it has three stops, two of which are in Apex. One is at the Compare Feeds Park and Ride and Hunter Street in Salem. And the last one is at Carry Depot. And that does run due peak hours with hour headways. Going into the Wait Transit Annual Work Plan, Go Triangle has proposed park and ride improvements. They haven't identified locations yet, but they do have set aside funding for that. As I mentioned earlier, there are Route 305 improvements coming onboard August of this year. And we have the Downtown Apex Transfer Point, which is scheduled to break ground this year with completion year no later than fiscal year 2023. Lastly, we have the Community Funding Area Program, which funds both capital and operating of Go Apex Route 1. And we are moving onboard with that. The slight delays due to construction and COVID, but we're still onboard with that. Wait Transit Plan, there weren't many updates except for it being extended three years, and that's due to the decrease in revenue due to COVID. So the plans that were scheduled to can be completed by 2027 will now be completed by 2030. Go Triangle does have some more planned bus stop enhancements for that. There's some on Mason Street and one on Moore. Also, coming with that Wait Transit Plan is high-frequency transit. There was identified two areas in Apex, which is US-1 and NC-55, where that can be done post 2036. And next, we have the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. The 2045 MTP Plan, like I said earlier, has high-capacity transit post 2030, and that will extend into Apex, Wake Forest, and Youngsville, not scheduled until 2036 as well. Right now, it's currently approved from Durham to Clayton. Moving into the 2050 MTP, that one is still creating transit scenarios for Go Triangle. We'll be partnering with town staff to see how we can align those goals. And that is set to be adopted either late this year or early 2021 by Campbell and Go Triangle staff. Any questions from the council?
Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Coltrane, thank you for that presentation and welcome to Apex. Actually, it was actually a question about the transit-oriented development project. I don't know if that's part of the presentation. I guess that's not. But it's on the agenda, so I might probably bring it up now. I just, these guys have heard this before. My dream project is that freight line that goes back here, between here and Durham, to move people rather than freight at some point. And I just think it's worth noting that the new Apple campus is a quarter mile from that line when it crosses through RTP. So when that transit-oriented development with the S-line is part of that planning is happening, I hope at least the crazy scenarios include that line as a possible bike or train or something in the future, just so you guys know. Because I think it would just, it would kill it if we had that to move people either on bicycles or by train. And there's going to be 3,000-plus workers in that spot and other people. Other businesses, like where I work, EPA, would benefit as well. So anyway, just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? All right, very informative. Thank you, Ms. Coltrane. We'll move now to presentation two. Ms. Christine Hill.
Evening, Mayor, Council. First want to say, I haven't seen y'all all together face-to-face in a long time, so this is, I'm glad we're getting kind of back to somewhat normal. I want to talk to you a little bit about the columbarium and how long we've been working on it and some of the history. First, the reason for it was when I first got here, as y'all know, our cemetery is 100% out plots. So the only way we can actually resell a plot is if someone resells one back to the town, and then from that, we resell it. So what we can do is we have one or two options. One is to either expand the cemetery by more land, which is always a lose-lose scenario for the town because we have to maintain it in perpetuity. Or we can do like we do with subdivisions and do an infill. Now, how we do an infill is pretty much a columbarium columbarium niche, which is the wall that goes for cremations. And what we've done is, we first started looking at it, and we then engineered it, which meant it was very, very efficient, but it looked horrible. So when we did that, we pretty much said, all right, we got something that would be, that we have an opportunity to have as a nice amenity, as an entryway to the cemetery. And if this is going to be here forever, we probably should hire somebody that can make it look a little nicer. So with that, we actually coordinated and contracted that with CLH Design. And from there, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Christine Hill, and she'll go over what it looks like now and some of the design standards she went with.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gilbert, members of the council. While they're plugging this in, I'll go ahead and entertain you. I'm very excited about this project. It is long past due. We were very honored to be selected to do this project. And so now I'm going to go ahead and talk to you about where we are. This is, first, the orientation. This is a gravel parking lot that exists that right now is used by Public Works. So this is the bottom of Up Church, looking up at the cemetery. Then this next image is the overall master plan of what the columbarium would look at like aerial view at full build-out. And as you can see, we're improving the parking lot, the existing parking lot, and we are creating an entry edge on the lower end of the cemetery, which it has never had. So there never has been an entrance to the cemetery. And what we have done is we've looked at Phase 1, and what we're going to be discussing tonight is Phase 1 of the columbarium. It has universal design, which, by the way, the cemetery has never had either. So we actually will have accessible parking and ramp up. The columbarium, actually, the walls will be a part of that ramping system. And we will finally have that gateway entrance to the cemetery that we all have wanted. Initial Phase 1 will have 780 niches. These are six-by-six niches. And the parking lot, as I said, will be upgraded. So now is the fun part. These are the initial images of Phase 1, and we wanted in Phase 1 to include that entry point with steps coming up so that you have that view into the cemetery. And finally, we have that entry point. We think that this also is a nice pre-function space for anything that's happening in the cemetery and for anything that would be happening in the columbarium. The two images to the right show you the actual areas where the niches would be. And as you'll see, we have seating and privacy and shade structures in order to create kind of an intimate space there for anyone who wants to contemplate. Niches are not only for cremations, but they're also memorials. A lot of people will actually use the niches and buy the niches and put nameplates on them just to have memories of people who are very important. So we want to have that special consideration and solitary moment. What we also wanted to do, and we thought this would be the fun part in working with the council and with Mayor Gilbert, is we have two options for you to look at. Basically, what we did is we created for Jose, and you know, as an engineer, he loved this. We created some image boards for him to look at different materials. The materials that we looked at in Option A and Option B are basically us taking photographs of downtown Apex, looking at Town Hall, and giving you a couple of different images. This first one is darker images, which show you a Georgian red brick. The dark granite niche covers. Looking at an amber plank-style paver. It's actually concrete. It's textured concrete. And then looking at this image where it's a little bit lighter. So you have the Asheville brown brick, and then we go lighter with the granite niches. Part of the reason that I did this is this is west-facing. So part of the other reason that we're showing those shade structures, the pergolas, is because there's a lot of heat that gets generated on that west face. So that's why we wanted to show you these two colors, both of which are a little bit light. So here's Option A. Here's Option B. And if you're all right, I'll go ahead and finish the presentation because I'm almost done. I realize you have a long agenda tonight, and then we can come back to these. So now I want to talk about the cost, and this is Phase 1. The actual cost for the site work, there's a lot of granite, there's a lot of brickwork, a lot of grading, is approximately $560,000. Then when we add the niches on top of that, remember, the niches do not need to be bought until you have orders. So the basic initial cost for construction is around $560,000. So this just identifies the construction. And what I did, columbariums are not something that you see every day. And the pricing on columbariums can vary. So what I did on this next page was a landscape architect's rendition of looking at price points, which is kind of humorous because I can now put it on my resume. The average price for area columbariums, and the two columbariums that we have that are local are the one at St. Andrews Catholic Church and at Mary Magdalene. Both of those have larger niches. They have nine-by-nine and eight-by-eight. We're looking at six-by-six niches here. So I looked at the average price for the niches at both of those columbariums, looking at about $4,250 per niche. Then I looked at the low-end cost. And the variation in cost really has to do with whether it's about visibility. The high-end cost is this range, and some of the walls are very high. Our wall, highest wall, is seven feet, and then the low wall is four feet. So this just identified that they have a range. To be honest, the high end was really around $8,500 per niche at one of the columbariums. So what I did is I ran some numbers to look at the affordability of building it. So I looked, when I looked at different price points, I looked at around $1,400 because I wanted to not only be competitive, but I want it to be affordable. Because this is something, we are an inclusive community, and I wanted to make sure I could put that line in so that it was affordable. If I look at around $1,400 per niche, at Phase 1 being 780 niches, just so you know, Phase 2 is a mirror, so it's another 780 niches. That would cover the cost to build Phase 1. It also covers 50% to 60% of the cost of building Phase 2 of the columbarium. So a full build-out of the 780 niches in Phase 1, you have already moved forward into paying for about half of the next phase of the columbarium. Phase 2 should be fully paid for at approximately, that's 60% of the total columbarium cost. So anything above that, once you have about 1,000 to 1,100 of the niches filled or ordered of your total 1,560 niches, the rest of that can go to maintenance and operations, anything else, any improvements that you want to make to the cemetery. I mean, we realize that this is not meant to be a profit-making situation, but there are so many needs for the cemetery that we did feel like it was very important, in that second phase, to have some money available to be able to fund other improvements. And basically, that is where we are right now. And I'm glad to go back to Option 1 or Option 2, but I also would like to answer any questions you may have.
I had a question in terms of accessibility for people with mobility needs where it comes to your entrance way. Can you speak to that?
Yes, I'll go ahead and go back to that. I'm actually going to identify, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but on the left-hand side, there is a ramp that goes up to the two covered areas. The entire upper area is accessible. And when we build the mirror, that will continue to be a ramp as well. So basically, what's happening is there's a ramp up. Then it comes up to a flat area, which is where you have the seven-foot wall and the four-foot wall of columbarium, another ramp, seven-foot, four-foot, that lovely landing area with the stairs. And then we're going to do the same thing on the other two sides. This is not a skateboard ramp. This will be subtle. I knew I'd make you laugh. This will be gentle, and it is designed for the elderly in mind.
In addition to that, we've worked with planning. Initially, we're looking at accessibility from the parking lot to the cemetery, which we don't have now. And what we've come up with is we've actually gone through and had engineering and my operations manager look through and find some areas to actually put ADA parking. So we're going to put some concrete individual parking spots throughout the cemetery in conjunction with this project so that there would be ADA, I can't say accessible routes, but ADA access throughout the cemetery, which, again, isn't there now.
Part of the challenge with the cemetery, and thank you for bringing that up, Jose. Part of the challenge with the cemetery is it actually averages across a slope of over 8%. So unless we ziplined, there's no way it would be accessible. But what Jose and I did is we did find some routes, not on Moore. Moore's very steep. But we did find some routes at the top of Moore that go through the cemetery. So in the future, there's always the option of having that route to get to at least the top of the cemetery.
Thank you.
Any kind of a tangent question maybe for Mr. Martinez? When I was looking at this, I was noticing that it looked like there's no sidewalk connecting 55 to the cemetery. And I was thinking, if we're making this nice, there might be some people that might walk from the road. Is it possible to put a sidewalk there?
There actually is. That was one of the things we were looking at originally, but it's not something we want to do a part of this project because there's going to be a huge Highway 55 project where they're going to change the sidewalk. And there's no sidewalk at the, I guess, eastern side of Up Church. There is a sidewalk on the southern side and a way to come through. So that gap was absolutely something we picked out, and then we didn't want to include it in the design because we didn't know the future. But that's a small of gap that we can do that internally with my operations crew.
Thanks.
Any other questions from council?
With no other questions, what I really wanted to see, right now, the fee structure is $600 per niche. So she was talking about $1,400, and I just wanted to gauge whether or not, and I'm not, we don't want to answer tonight, but this is something, do you want us to look at the $1,400 and possibly bring a better analysis to you when we look at fee structures this year?
Everybody in agreement?
Worth taking a look at.
Which means you're asking to make it more affordable, is that what I'm hearing?
Actually, there's history about that. Originally, a price point was set at $600 very early on, and that wasn't based on any research. So now that we're in the construction and we are looking at other columbariums, that's why I ran the numbers that I did, was to at least give you a basis of understanding that we felt that it was time to probably look in more detail at the cost and bring that number up so that at least you were paying for the construction that you were doing.
And the overall cost per niche of Phase 1 is just under $1,000 per niche. So right now, if we do sell for $600, we are supplementing that for quality life. And this is a quality life issue. So there's not a right or wrong answer. If a town wants to supplement for something like that, that's absolutely council's prerogative to do something of that sort. But of course, coming back from the engineering side, I want to make this sustainable.
And if I can add as well, the fascinating thing is, you know, we're looking at the two other columbariums, which are church columbariums. So we have opportunities to even look at price points based on need. So there are just so many different ways that we can look at this to provide opportunities for people to be able to use this option who don't feel that that's available to them anywhere else in the area.
Any other questions? All right, Ms. Hill, thank you so much. I know the great work you do. I've seen it before, so.
Are we doing the A versus B tonight?
You can if you want. We were just showing you a couple of options. But if you want to make that option, we can absolutely do that.
I have some thoughts, I'm not sure if I else.
Most definitely. So here is one image. This is Option A, and here is Option B. And yes, I would love your opinions.
Go ahead.
Well, my thought was, I don't visit a lot of cemeteries very often, but I figure that it's most likely going to be in the nicer weather, probably in the summertime, if I had to guess. And I thought the lighter would be, besides the shade thing, would be a little bit cooler. It seems kind of heavy, especially for a summertime visit, I would think, the Option A. So I thought B was my preference. And my wife, who's a good design person, also agreed with B, so for what it's worth.
Any other opinions?
Well, I can go. I have a difficult time trying to decide between both of them because I think they're both really nice. When I saw the darker one, it reminded me more like memorials, like in DC, things like that. Just, and so it's very moving, I think, you know, when I am there. So, but I also thought about, like, visually, you know, with the lighter brick, which would be more visually appealing to people who are actually standing there and spending time there and reading names and things. So I just wasn't sure what visually would be appealing to people. So either one, but I was kind of thinking maybe the dark. But I think both are really great, so.
One other thing we can do so you don't have to make the decision tonight is we will move farther, and we will get actual samples, and we can always bring those back. So that is not a problem. And actually, looking at them in the western sun is perfect, and we can go outside and look at them.
I'll jam into you.
Shout me in.
I was going to say, A looks a little more like Apex to me than B does. Just throw that out there. B is a little too light. It doesn't look like a brick that way around here.
Two to one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much.
One quick question I always like to make.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to have community input on those two designs? And how, what would that look like?
It's always possible.
Would it be difficult?
There's a lot of, I guess, challenges with this project, and it was mainly with ADA and accessibility and how we connected everything. It is always possible. It's just start, so it sets us back a little bit. And if that's the direction the council wants to give, we can absolutely step back.
I don't know what my colleagues think. I always like to get community input. You all know me. But I agree, I'm leaning more towards A myself. I think it looks a little more formal. I was thinking about our wayfinding program and how it might complement those colors. I don't know if our staff could weigh in on that, if one color would complement the wayfinding colors we chose. I mean, I don't know if anybody has thoughts about that.
Are you talking about the gateway ones or the brick ones?
I could be persuaded either way. I mean, to me, they both look like great options.
And I'm also fine if we work with planning and work with Public Works, and they determine that, so totally up to you.
All right.
This has been fun, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Presentation 3, Mr. Tom Colwell. I know there's some interesting art around town you want to talk about.
Hello, everyone.
Ah, I got the glasses on. Well hidden on me, all right. Well, thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak to you today about public art. Specifically, I wanted to speak to you about the sculpture walk that was installed two weeks ago. So hopefully, some of you had a chance to take the walk or at least see a few of the sculptures around town. So to give you a little background, it's about a one-mile journey from one end to the other, but depending on where you park, like, probably about a mile and a half type walk. And that's important because one of the reasons behind this sculpture walk was to combine fitness, getting outside, enjoying the beautiful outdoors, and public art, as well as tie together town campus, Hunter Street Park, and downtown to create a little bit more connectivity through art and through that little walk that you can take. There's, I say, nine plus one sculptures because there are nine new sculptures that have come in, and they're on a temporary basis, plus our one that's in our permanent collection trajectory, this is out here. So we wanted to feature that as well in the art walk because it's all part of the same area and kind of tied in well together and give that more visibility. It's been there for about a year and a half, but it's nice to, again, include that in the show. They'll be there for 11 months, so they went in April, they'll be here until next March, and then they kind of all go away, and depending on the feedback from the public and yourselves, it's something that we could do on an annual basis. But we haven't made that decision yet, so we'll wait and see, again, how people like it and what we'd like to do going forward. There is an app, so I do encourage you all to download the Autocast app. It is a free app, so, and it's got, it's very easy to use, and it gives you information about each piece of art. There's an audio clip from each of the artists telling a little bit about the piece of work. It also has a map with pinpoints on there so you know where you are. And it's a very cool app, so it's all over the country and actually internationally as well. So if you're in another community, you may stumble upon some other interesting activities, either art walks, there's historical information on there and other type of ways that people are using the application. And then we're going to have a couple of awards associated with the show. One is a People's Choice Award. So again, if you go on the app, you can pick your selection for People's Choice, and we're tallying those votes over the next couple of months. And then we'll have a People's Choice winner that will award, hopefully, at Peak Fest in a small ceremony or something, to the winning artist, as well as a Best in Show, which will be selected by a juror who we've brought on board that helped with the selection of the art, as well as a committee that was pulled together. Thank you, Mayor Gilbert, Mayor Pro Tem Dozier, for helping out with that as well. And so that gentleman will also pick a Best in Show Award winner. So that's really the kind of landscape for what we have out there. Again, out at Hunter Street Park, there's a couple of very interesting sculptures out in that area, real fun one near the skate park, and then this other stand that's out near the baseball field. And then on the town campus, we have, hopefully, you saw some of these when you came in today, that these are around the campus, and then trajectory on the far right is our piece, that's our permanent collection. And a couple as you head downtown, and so at Duncan Commons, and then on the way downtown in front of the Halle, in front of the Depot as well, and then wrapping up the walk over near the police station and kind of around the corner from there. So it's, again, a nice little connection between the town, the campus, and the Hunter Street Park. One thing I would like that perhaps you could consider is, I know you're kind of finalizing the budget for next year, so one thing that can help us build our permanent collection is to consider perhaps purchasing one or maybe a couple of the pieces of art, perhaps the People's Choice Award or the Best in Show or some other one if we want to determine another way to make a selection like that. But that would be something for your consideration, that, again, a good way for us to grow our own kind of portfolio of art for the town. So that's it on that program, and I'm happy to answer any questions or field any comments that you might have.
Questions from council, comments?
Just a comment, you know, I was pleasantly surprised when they went up, just, you know, kind of driving around town. So it's been very interesting, just, you know, not knowing their names or knowing anything about them, trying to figure out what it's about, so it's pretty cool.
And again, the app can help you out with a little bit more of that. And then now, there's signage out there too with a little brief on each one of the pieces as well. And just want to give a thanks to a whole bunch of people that were involved. I mean, the town was terrific in working with us to make this really happen. And, you know, you make a list, and it's always dangerous because I know I left people off the list, and I apologize in advance, but really, a whole lot of folks really stepped up and helped a tremendous amount to make it happen, and it was a lot of fun. So hopefully, people enjoy it, and we'll see what we do next time around.
Does it get any more?
No.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Jump in here. So we got these for a year, is that right?
That's right.
This is pretty amazing, and this is a great amenity for people around town. It'll be really popular as, you know, warmer days are coming. I'm real excited about it. I haven't got a chance to go out there and do it yet, but I'm looking forward to it. What's the plan for going forward next year? What's this, these pieces?
Yeah, so again, if there's good feedback, if people are interested, if, you know, we want to give this a go again, what we would do is go through the same process, and we'd have a call for artists, we'd have a committee, make some selections. These would all vanish in March, and a whole new crop would appear in April. And so it could be something that we do, you know, on a rotating basis and just kind of get a refresh of different art on an annual basis or semi-annually, or however frequently we'd like to give it a go.
Fantastic, thank you.
I'd chime in real quick. You know, I think the request of the permanent, putting that in our budget for permanent purchase is, I think, worth considering on this council. And if we pick one like the Best in Show or the People's Choice, that may reduce the controversy that I think art always has, and also get more buy-in from the community. So I think that's a good plan possibly to go forward, and I've been really impressed by them, so I think it would be a good asset to have, you know, for the long term as well.
Anyone else? All right, amazing job, well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your support.
All right, presentation four, presentation of the 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week Proclamation. And we will do a share of reading with that proclamation, starting with Councilman Stollings.
There are 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and...
Whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all, at other levels, and...
Whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and...
Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of the local government and community, and...
Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve administration of the affairs of the office of the town clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, municipal and intergovernment, international professional organizations, and...
Where it is fitting, we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. And therefore, I, Josh K. Gilbert, Mayor of the Town of Apex, do recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our town clerk, Donna V. Hosh, MMC, and Deputy Town Clerk, John Tessa Silver, CMC, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Signed this 27th day of April, 2021. So we do have Ms. Tessa Silver here tonight, and we want to give her a round of applause. Thank you. All right, moving now to presentation five, presentation of the proclamation declaring April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day in the Town of Apex. Again, share a reading of the proclamation, starting with Councilman Terry Mahaffey.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Arbor Day in the Town of Apex. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and...
Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees, and...
Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and...
Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and...
Whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas the Apex Town Council and the Tree Citizen Advisory Panel, the TreeCap, will commemorate Arbor Day by planting six trees, one for each year designated as a Tree City USA at Claremont Park on April 30, 2021.
Now therefore, I, Josh K. Gilbert, Mayor of the Town of Apex, do hereby proclaim April 30 of 2021 as Arbor Day in the Town of Apex, and urge all citizens to celebrate our Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. So sign this 27th day of April, 2021. I think we have some presentations tonight from...
This is Mayor Mark Seibert, Senior Zoning Compliance Officer, and this is Jeff O'Rourke with the Tree Cap. You want to speak here?
I don't have any. I work for the Forest Service, and we promote trees, and I've been on the Tree Cap Board, I guess, six years, so trying to promote trees.
Well, thank you for your service. Thank you for everything. I know we do have the event coming up on Friday, so we have everybody here represented tonight, so we look forward to that event. So thank you all so much. Appreciate it. All right, we now move to our consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine to be enacted by one motion with the adoption of the consent agenda and without discussion. If a council member requests discussion of an item, the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, they pass unanimously. We'll now move to setting of the regular meeting agenda. Not been presenting any updates as far as changing the agenda. Now's the time to do that. If not, we'll go ahead and set the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to...
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, we have a set agenda. We'll move right into our public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the community to speak about concerns or any suggestions or recommendations for the community in what we do. The council will not respond to anything tonight. We're taking notes, and if there are any requests, myself or the staff will get back with you with that return. So tonight, we have Mr. Randy King. And you have three minutes, if you would, just monitor the lights. At red light, I'm gonna have to have you to end your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gilbert, Mayor Gilbert, members of the Apex Council. Hi, my name is Randy King. My address is 1225 Crescent Green Drive in Cary, 27518. I'm here to speak tonight on the Hackney rezoning case that I think is listed in your unfinished business as cases UB1 and UB2. My purpose is to enter into the record additional conditions that have been developed through conversations with members of the board, the staff, the Hackney family. And if desired by the board, I will wait and enter those conditions as that case comes up, or I can enter them now and...
Just wait till the case comes up.
Fantastic. So we'll wait till the cases come up, and I'll be back then. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's the only presenter in public forum tonight, so I'll close public forum and move now into public hearings. Public hearing number one, Ms. Allison Coltrane, again, long-range transit planner to the Town of Apex.
I will be presenting public hearing number one, public hearing and possible motion regarding proposed amendment to the transit plan map related to Go Apex Route 1. What you see here is the map of Go Apex Route 1. Circled and identified with X's is the proposed stop, removal of the interior stop at Beaver Creek Crossings. We are proposing this removal because we were unable to reach an agreement with the property owner, and we would need to do so to enter into the property. They did say that they would like to discuss this further down the line if the availability comes, but we are proposing that that be removed at this time. Staff did work with the Public Works and Transportation Department, and they had no concerns about removing the stop. Also, the Transit Advisory Committee unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendment during their April 4 meeting, April 14 meeting, and the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendment during their April 12 meeting as well. Any questions at this time?
Any questions for Ms. Coltrane?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So this won't cease the outreach to the owner of the property, because I think this interior stop would be preferable, so you guys will still be kind of trying to reach out, and if there is a change, then we'll come back here and maybe add it back in possibly?
Yeah, we are still currently in contact with them, of course, for the licensing agreement, so we'll continue to see if they're open to the idea of having a stop later in time.
It's my hope that when this bus go through, there might be some realization that they want this, and I hope that's the case going forward.
And I did want to mention that Beaver Creek Crossings will still be serviced by two stops along Beaver Creek Columbus Drive.
Okay, any other questions?
I just agree with my colleague, this is kind of disappointing because it seems like the interior stop would be a lot safer if nothing else, you know, rather than stopping Beaver Creek Crossing, it'd be kind of busy, and it would be, you know, to the advantage of the stores and businesses there to have the bus stop as close as possible. So it's too bad, but, you know, if they don't want it there, they don't want it there.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? All right, with that, we'll open up public hearing for this item for comment. No one has signed up to speak tonight on this item, so I'll close public hearing and move the item back to council for discussion leading to a possible motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
All right.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
I just want to say, Mayor, I know you know a lot of people in this town, maybe everybody, so maybe you could reach out at some point to this landowner and...
You're on the negotiating team.
Right. Okay, cool.
All right, any other discussion?
I support that. Can we make a motion on that? Do you need a motion?
Well, I mean, just a comment, I would think that, you know, this would only be beneficial to them, bringing more business to them, so, you know, I hope it's something they reconsider.
All right, with that, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, they pass unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we now move to public hearing two, quasi-judicial public hearing and possible motion regarding a major site plan for Felton Grove High School located at 8550 Stevenson Road. And this item was continued from the April 13, 2021 meeting. So what I'll do now is give an opening statement, and the town council normally functions as a legislative capacity. Major site plan hearings are quasi-judicial, which means the council acts essentially as a court of law. The burden is upon the applicant for the major site plan to put on evidence to show that they meet the criteria found in the town's Unified Development Code, the UDO. Anyone opposed to the application must put on evidence of similar kind showing the criteria have not been met. Testimony must be given under oath, and all testimony and evidence provided to the council must be competent, material, and substantial pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute's competent evidence does not include opinion testimony of lay witnesses on certain matters. Hearsay evidence will not be admitted. The parties have the right to cross-examine witnesses and present rebuttal evidence. The town council will apply the criteria contained in the UDO and make a decision based on evidence and testimony presented at the hearing. The town council will now take the case of the major site plan for the Felton Grove High School located at 8550 Stevenson Road. And with that, we're opening up the public hearing. And at this time, once we get Madam Clerk, she's following some things real quick, we'll get everybody...
Thank you.
Take your time, we're good.
Y'all can just talk amongst yourselves, we'll figure it out. We're all for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, two, three, four.
H.
Okay, nope. And then...
I got H.
I got H.
I passed it off to her, so you have these two big ones. Okay, H and I, okay. H and I.
Put it up here.
H and I, okay.
Let's grab the- Oh, look, this is for yours, look. Can't even guess what that's-
We will. So, this is extra.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we're ready to move forward. I would ask tonight, if anyone here is a Spanish interpreter, we could use your help tonight if you are available. Do we know of anyone that's available tonight that can help us out? Okay.
I speak Spanish, I'm not an interpreter. I can certainly do my best to help out.
Okay. We just want to make sure that those who wish to testify tonight, I'm sorry?
I can also help.
Okay, thank you so much. So, if, let's do this real quick. If you plan to give testimony tonight, we need for you to come and be sworn in by our Madam Clerk, if you could present that as well.
Ma'am, if you would allow, you're one of the volunteer interpreters to announce that as well.
Where's my volunteer interpreter? I'm sorry, before you move on, Ms. Tessa, sorry. Where's my volunteer at tonight?
Are you volunteering?
Yeah.
If you could make, if you step over here one second, please. Thank you. Yes, sir. Yep, we're gonna get it straight. All right, if you would, just make an announcement if anyone is here tonight that wishes to testify or present tonight, if you present that in Spanish, please. If you could just go to the microphone for me, right there. Thank you.
Cualquier persona que gustaría hablar hoy puede pasarse adelante porque van a- How do you say testify? I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Pueden pasar enfrente por favor si gustarian comentar algo hoy. Nadie atrás quiere comentar algo hoy? Okay. That's fine, I think everyone's here, yeah.
All right, thank you so much for doing that. So, yeah. All right. Madam Clerk, if you would swear me, please. All right, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. If you could just-
Leslie Martinez.
Leslie Martinez? Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Martinez? All right, I'll remind the council tonight of their checklist that you have in front of you. It looks like this right here. And ask you to check off on standards as testimony is given and take note of any questions concerning whether a particular standard has been met. This will help save the time at the end of the hearing. Tonight, I guess we'll move forward with identifying all applicant supporters and opponents. We'll do that as we, in fact, if you are the applicant, if you would, just stand up for me, please, so I can just recognize you. Okay, great.
I have a question.
Yes.
We've got an extra microphone here. Do we want the interpreter to come sit and translate as things are being presented so they understand?
Maybe right, uh, does that microphone right there work?
Or sitting at one of the desks.
Yes. Okay. Is there additional seat over here? Over there, okay. Ms. Marti- All right, Ms. Martinez, can you help us out over here? Thank you. We gotta give you an award after this is over with.
We're gonna do something for you.
Yes, we are. Okay, great. Perfect, perfect, perfect. Okay, I just want to offer some clarity as we move forward. If you're here tonight with a group and just to cut out on a lot of just redundancy, if you plan to speak, if you could designate one person from your group to speak tonight, the testimony, that would be very helpful. So, if you would, Ms. Martinez, present that as well.
Testing, okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I wasn't able to hear what you just said.
Sure, no problem. If there are any people here tonight as a group and if they can designate a speaker for the group, that'd help out with moving this along and redundancy, so.
Si usted viene con un grupo, es mejor que presente una persona para el grupo. Pueden ustedes decidir la persona que gustaría hablar para todos ustedes.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. All right, with that, I do want to remind us, again, we want to move this along. There's a lot to go over tonight. If you want to celebrate a moment of something said tonight during the testimony, we don't mind you doing that. You can raise a roof by doing that right there, just hand signals or do this right here. But we don't want a lot of, you know, noise tonight because we try to move through this as quickly as possible. So, thank you very much.
Si gustaria celebrar un comentario o algo, no más levanten- No aplausos.
Thank you very much. All right, so we'll move now to, I want to give each council member and myself an opportunity to do three things. Describe any communication about this case that have been made with or by a council member for tonight's hearing. Number two, any relational or financial conflict related to this case and whether a council member will be able to decide this case impartially and solely on the competent evidence presented at this hearing. So, I'll start to my right with Councilmember Stollings, if you could, just present that as-
I have had no such communications. I have no interrelational or financial conflicts and I can be impartial.
Councilman McGinn.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the list of things again?
Sure, any communications about the case, any relational or financial conflict related to the case, and if you can decide this case impartially.
I have no communication besides the rezoning previously, no relational or financial conflicts, and I can judge impartially.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dozier.
I have no financial or other conflicts. I can be impartial and I've had no communication outside of what's allowed.
Okay. All right, I have no financial relational conflict. I can decide a case impartially solely or rule over this. And there's been no communications about this case, pardon me. Councilwoman Stollings?
I've had no communications. I have no relational or financial conflicts and I can be impartial in this case.
All right. Councilwoman Mahaffey?
Yeah, Mayor, I have no communication, no financial interest, but I do have a relationship conflict. I'm married to a member of the governing body of the applicant, so for that reason, I'd ask for my recusal of this case.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Can we get, when we took this whole government class, there was a discussion about very few times when you can recuse yourself. Is this one of those, Ms. Zoe?
Yes, because of this personal relation.
Relational is the, okay.
Because it's quasi-judicial and not zoning matters.
Okay.
Very good. So, is there a motion to recuse?
Still moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
I hadn't refused.
All right. Further discussion?
I'm just gonna let them know.
Okay.
So, ellos están diciendo que no tienen ningún contacto, no le están pagando a ellos, no tienen una relación. El señor que está aquí sentado sí tiene una relación con alguien del condado, so no va a comentar de la situación de la escuela. Él es el único que no va a participar con esto.
Okay.
See you, Tim.
We had a vote.
Yep, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right, passing unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, next I will ask council members if they have viewed the site. If so, describe your observations. I will start with Councilwoman Stollings.
No, I have not.
Okay.
I have not viewed the site.
I have not.
Okay, I have not viewed the site as well.
I have not viewed the site.
All right, we're good to proceed. So, we'll move now to the opening statement and we'll start with staff. Thank you so much.
Good evening. As you know, my name is Shelley Mayo. I've been a planner with the Town of Apex for almost eight years and have a master's degree in city planning from UNC. The project before you is the Felton Grove High School, which is proposed at 8550 Stevenson Road. Just to give you an idea of where that is in our jurisdiction, whoops, it is here on kind of the southeasternmost corner of our jurisdiction, almost exactly at the southeasternmost corner. The parcel totals about 68.06 acres and is, as you can see from this aerial, is completely wooded. There are several perennial and intermittent streams throughout the site as well. It's located west of Stevenson Road here and is accessed via Dairy Down Lane and Thriftwood Drive. It is also north of Sunset Lake, which is unfortunately slightly off the screen. It is also north of the Indian Hills subdivision and the Triangle Forest Products landfill, which was formerly owned by Kern Brothers. The applicant conducted a virtual neighborhood meeting on November 18th, 2020. That meeting report is attached. And then because of some concerns that came up during the rezoning process, the applicant actually held a separate neighborhood meeting with the residents of the adjacent rental properties. This courtesy meeting was held on April 7th and was not required by the UDO. The applicant has the information on that neighborhood meeting and they will present that for you. On the most of page two and the first part of page three of your staff report lists the zoning conditions that were approved when this was rezoned last month. Then the proposed high school will actually provide, and here are the streams that I was talking about a moment ago. I've highlighted the buffers for you just so that you have a better idea of roughly where those are. The proposed building, or the proposed high school is expected to provide space for 2,350 students and approximately 200 employees. The site consists of several buildings, parking lots, a parking deck, and a sports field. The main building ranges from one to three stories tall and contains approximately 393,000 square feet and 110 classrooms. This building is primarily brick with ephors and architectural metal accents throughout it. This is one of the architect's renderings of what it should look like from the courtyard area. These are the north and east sides of the building. They're not as detailed simply because the image won't fit well on here when it is. And the west and south as well. And then these are the two sides that will be visible of the parking deck. And these are the proposed exterior finishes of everything. It's a little easier to see it this way. There are also several smaller athletic buildings throughout, so here, here, a couple in this area, that total about 8,000 square feet on the northern portion of the site. On this image before you, this is the overall site layout for the development in light green. I've highlighted the stream buffers. In darker green, those are sections of the plan that are being dedicated as RCA. There are additional areas that could qualify, but they, the applicant is proposing this at the moment and it does meet the RCA requirements. The blue lines are the actual streams themselves, and then these paler blue areas are just highlighting the SCMs throughout the property. Okay? So, the UDO requires developments in this area to provide 20% of the site as resource conservation area. This site does meet that requirement. On the bottom of page three of your staff report, we have a table showing what the UDO requires for buffers and what is provided for a buffer. The applicant is proposing to meet or exceed all of the UDO requirements or be consistent with the one or two cases that that was varied at the rezoning. So, there's a 20-foot type B buffer required along the west, the south, the west, and the north, and that adjacent to anywhere where there's large lot, single families, so primarily here, here, and then this area. Then adjacent to the landfill, there's actually a 15-foot type B buffer, but is being shown as a 20-foot type B buffer on the plan, so they are exceeding the UDO standard there. Along the north, we actually had a zoning condition that was approved last month that allowed the applicant to reduce the buffer by up, down to no more than a 15-foot type A buffer if there was going to be tiebacks from a retaining wall included in it. The applicant is meeting that condition and on the landscaping plan has shown the requisite landscaping needed to fulfill that. In addition, the site plan meets the other conditions that were approved last month. Zoning conditions one and three, the applicant and engineer have worked with staff to preserve as much of the existing forested area as possible, and a reforestation seed mix is shown in the areas specified in the zoning condition. So, that will be used to help regrow the bits of forest that we couldn't avoid. For zoning condition six, shade trees have not been planted between the parking spaces and the parking deck, so between here and here, but have instead been spread throughout the development and the required number of those has been shown. And zoning condition 10 shows trees and shrubs planted both above and below cast-in-place retaining walls within the 20-foot type B buffer. The parking situation on site, it also meets the UDO. The provided number of parking, so the minimum required by the UDO is 10 spaces per classroom for a high school. That means that we have a minimum requirement of 1,100 spaces. The applicant is providing that number of spaces. This also includes 21 handicap spaces and two electric vehicle charging stations within the parking deck. And separately, there are 56 bicycle parking spaces provided while the UDO only requires 26. The proposed major site plan, the utilities for the proposed major site plan also meet the UDO. On this plan, you'll see both blue and purple lines. The purple lines are the sewer lines. The blue lines are for water. The sewer will come from the Middle Creek sewer pump station down here just off of Sunset Lake, come up in this direction, run across the landfill, and then two branches of the sewer will split off to stub on the eastern side of each property in the general area of the streams. And that's just because it is a gravity sewer system, so it has to. And then water will be brought down from Smith Road along this private road and then do the same thing as well, providing sewer connection to some, sewer and water connection to the adjacent properties. Generally speaking, this site sits lower than the eastern and northern properties. The main buildings, parking, and closest sport fields are about 10 to 20 feet lower than the adjacent property to the east. And we do have, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Russell discuss most of the transportation issues, but I am gonna brief you on a couple of things that have come up during this. So, the proposed, Wake County Public School Systems is proposing to access the site through Dairy Down and Thriftwood. The applicant is proposing to reconstruct both of those roads to meet an NCDOT access road standard. At the moment, the roads don't meet any of the state's standards and the applicant is aware that the amount of traffic that they're proposing, not to mention construction traffic, would overwhelm the existing state. So, they will be rebuilding those roads within the existing right-of-way, what is shown as the existing right-of-way on a plat, in order to make sure that it can handle, just as far as constructibility, that it can actually handle that amount of traffic. Then the TIA, one second. The TIA noted that the school is supposed to consist of 2,300 students and 217 staff members. The school is projected to generate approximately 1,100 new trips entering and 253 new trips leaving the site during the AMP peak day hour on the weekend, or on the school weekday, and 139 trips entering and 776 new trips exiting the site during the PMP hour. Staff has formulated several recommendations based on the UDO standards, but NC general statutes only gives the town authority to make requirements, to require improvements to municipal streets. I have a quote in there from the general statutes on top of page five of your staff report, says, "A city may only require street improvements related to schools that are required for safe ingress and egress to the municipal street system and that are physically connected to a driveway on the school site." Since Thriftwood Drive, Dairy Down, and Stevenson Road are not municipal roads, Stevenson is a state road, and there's discussion about who Thriftwood and Dairy Down belong to, but we know it's not the town. Apex doesn't have the authority to require road improvements for this school. Now, with that said, we did review their TIA and Russell and the other transportation engineers made recommendations based on our UDO. Russell's gonna discuss those with you, but I just needed to make it clear that while we have some recommendations, we don't have the authority to enforce them. And to be honest, a different portion of the state statutes would have made us pay for them as well, and we don't have that money in our budget, so, just as an FYI. I will turn the rest of the transportation section over to Russell, and he can answer any questions you have about that portion.
I'm gonna go over what she just said really fast. Buenas tardes, yo he trabajado con la ciudad de Apex por ocho años. La nueva escuela va a tener 2,300 estudiantes y 200 trabajadores que serán maestros y maestras, 110 clases, y vamos a tener 1,100 espacios de parqueadero. Y tenemos planear en salvar todos los árboles que podamos durante la construcción. Las entradas de la escuela y la salida va a ser Dairy Down Lane and Thriftwood Drive. Estaba comentando que Stephenson Road es una calle de la ciudad, digo del estado, pero Thriftwood Drive y Dairy Down no es, so no, no está enforzado para que ellos tengan que hacer algo con esas calles, no más con Stephenson. Y ahorita no tienen planes de hacer nada con esas calles. Han escuchado sus comentarios, pero no tienen la capacidad ellos con, con el dinero que originalmente ya tenían puesto para la escuela. Y ahorita va a pasar otro señor para hablar de las opciones en que podemos trabajar.
Thanks, Ms. Martinez. Mr. Dalton.
Good evening. My name is Russell Dalton. I'm the senior transportation engineer for the town of Apex. I've got over 20 years' experience in traffic and transportation engineering. I've been at the town since 2005 and I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. Tonight, as Shelley mentioned, I'm gonna go over our traffic recommendations. There was a traffic impact analysis scoped with town of Apex staff and NC DOT staff performed by a consultant working for Wake County Public Schools. That's typical with any school site that comes to Apex, we will have a traffic impact analysis performed. We reviewed that. Staff issue recommendations, NC DOT also issues recommendations. So what I'm covering tonight is an exhibit that shows both the town recommendations and the consultant recommendations for Wake County schools. So we'll walk through intersection to intersection. If you need to stop me for questions, that's perfectly fine, you know, we can discuss that. You know, I'll try and explain a little bit of context in each case, too, not, not as much just the technical details, but also sort of the issues surrounding DOT recommendations, which aren't reflected on this figure, and you'll understand why as we go through it. First of all, Shelley's assured me this is foolproof, so we'll find out. But as you can see up here, we do have a legend, this'll, this'll sort of help a little bit as we go through, and is this large enough for people to see and to zoom maybe? Whoop, okay. I wonder if I can, ah, there we go. I can zoom in. So I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. So first of all, the Reunion Creek Parkway intersection at East Williams Street was part of the study area. The reason for that was originally on our transportation plan, we had a connection of Reunion Creek Parkway through that area back to the school, all the way back over to Thriftwood Drive. That has since been taken off our plan, but at the time, when we did review it with that traffic distribution, with that connection, which was one of the alternatives studied in the traffic impact analysis, we did not recommend any additional improvements at that intersection compared to what's there now. And that's the, so basically, we concurred with the recommendations for the consultant for Wake County Schools. Now that that's no longer a connection, that, that would not change anything, we still would not recommend any changes to that intersection. Going down to East Williams Street at Sunset Lake Road, we had substantial recommendations. So if you look at this intersection, it is currently signalized. This, this color here, and I'm colorblind, so forgive me if I say this is green and it's not, but it looks green to me. This is a recommendation from the consultant for Wake County Schools for a 450-foot right turn lane, based on the capacity analysis. Based on our revised analysis, our recommendations, we actually reduced that to 400 feet. And again, they have a northbound right turn lane with 500 feet, we reduced that to 200 feet. The reason is, based on our analysis, and we do this with, you know, with any TIA we receive, we look at other criteria in our UDO concerning queuing on certain movements, and when we make different recommendations, sometimes it actually reduces the recommendations on other movements, and that was the case for those two. So we actually have less, same, same recommendations for turn lanes, but less storage recommended in our analysis. And the reason is, we actually recommended a second southbound left turn lane for the intersection, and we also recommended a second eastbound through right, through lane that would be continued all the way to Commons Drive, which is about 1,300 feet. So we see, saw a need for significant additional capacity. You know, their analysis showed about a level service EF for AMP and peak hour operations. We can get that to about a D to an E, so we get a little bit better operations, better queuing with what we've proposed. Of course, it's more significant improvements. NC DOT did not recommend any improvements at this intersection. Per state law, if NC DOT makes recommendations or requirements at intersections on state roads, they would be required to pay for those. So that is certainly on the top of their minds when they're making recommendations. It's not, you know, it's not out of the ordinary for, you know, intersections a long distance away from a site, even though it's in the TIA and recommends, and their improvement's recommended, that you might not recommend improvements there. And it depends on how much volume is actually generated. So there's quite a bit of school volume going through the intersection. That's why the Wake County Schools consultant recommended improvements, and we recommended improvements on top of that. But, but again, NC DOT's not recommending anything. I would estimate, you know, if you went through with all the improvements at this intersection, as shown, you would be over a million and a half dollars at this intersection alone, just making those improvements, just to, just to give you an idea. There's, there's a lot of school traffic coming from that intersection. I think they're showing about 85% of the school traffic coming through there, so that's part of the reason why there's so much impact. It's also already an extremely busy intersection, so any amount of traffic added to that intersection is going to, to cause those queues to get worse and increase those delays. So as you travel further down Sunset Lake Road, we get to our next intersection, much closer to the school. This is Sunset Lake Road at Stevenson Road, also currently a busy intersection. There is an apartment complex that is proposed on the northeast corner. I believe that's a Holly Springs development. You know, I can't guarantee where they are in the process or if they'll move forward or not, but our understanding, and based on their, what they're showing as background, there are turn lanes proposed by that apartment complex, as well as a traffic signal. So if that moves forward, that would be doing that. Just to give you an idea of DOT's recommendations, they've not recommended any turn lane improvements. Currently, there are no turn lanes there. NC DOT has recommended a traffic signal. So regardless of whether the apartment complex moves forward or not, there would be a traffic signal, as we understand, installed at that intersection per NC DOT recommendations. But back to the recommendations from Wake County Schools consultant, they do show very long dual-left turn lanes turning onto Stevenson Road because you have over 900 cars in the peak hour in the morning making that movement. That's extremely heavy for a left turn at an intersection. You know, that's even exceeding what you would typically see a dual-left turn lane able to handle for signalized control. So you can see, you know, these max available, 1150-foot max queue, this is a really long, really long turn lane, really heavy movement. And then they've also got recommendations for, you know, extending this right turn lane to 625 feet and extending this left turn lane to 525 feet. So significant improvements there. We reviewed it. We don't think a conventional intersection can handle the traffic volumes there based on our requirements. So we've, we've proposed what's called an RCI, a reduced conflict intersection, which essentially prohibits left turns at the signal. You would actually pick up an extra lane, travel further east around 500 feet, make a U-turn in a dual U-turn lane at another signal, come back, and then make a right turn. So sort of like a super street type design where you're not making direct movements. It's almost like a reverse of a super street. Still making left end, you're going down, making a U-turn and coming back. So, and we would not, with this, we would not recommend extending this southbound left turn lane because there's not a need for that capacity under our scenario. You're looking at level service F for a conventional improvement based on the analysis. With an RCI-type design, you're probably looking at around a level service B based on our analysis. Again, it's a very heavy volume, not something a typical conventional intersection can handle, and that's why we've recommended that. I would anticipate around 1.5 to $2 million worth of improvements to do this kind of project at this intersection, because you're talking about substantial widening, medians and other things that have to be installed. But again, you'd need more detailed construction cost estimates coming from a design to really know what you're dealing with there. As you travel north, this is the Thriftwood Drive intersection. This is taking the brunt of the traffic for the school. This is where the students are coming in. This is where, you know, buses and staff are shown coming in. You have, you know, that heavy left turn volume that's coming off this intersection. Most of that's taking this left turn into here. The consultant for Wake County Schools recommended maintaining two-way stop control, which is there now, you know, Thriftwood stops, teardrop circle stops. They recommended southbound right turn lane, fairly short, 100 feet, northbound left turn lane, fairly long, 500 feet, and then 250 feet with a storage to get an additional lane on Thriftwood Drive exiting. That's, that intersection's handling extremely heavy volume. That doesn't really operate as two-way stop control, so we have gone to recommend a traffic signal and actually recommended a dual northbound left turn lane to help shorten up that queue and provide enough storage to prevent queue spillback. We do concur with the right turn lane and the storage coming out. A dual-left turn lane would also require widening, additional widening on Thriftwood Drive entering the site, so you'd have to get enough storage and enough decel to let people use those dual-left turn lanes to merge back in. So there is a drawback there where you're providing additional widening if there's not enough room to do it. You know, if you've got residential properties in the way, you don't have enough roadway width, that's significant additional impact. But, you know, being able to do that, we're taking this from level service F with extremely long side street delays, which can impact safety, taking that from level service F to overall level service D with that traffic signal. And then as we travel further north, this is the Dairy Down Lane entrance where the parents come in, based on the traffic analysis. The consultant for Wake County Schools recommended 100 feet of storage for the additional lane coming out for the stop control, recommended a northbound 100-foot left turn lane entering the site, and we concurred with those recommendations. And I will go back and say, you know, DOT did not recommend any improvements at Dairy Down Lane or Cackleburg, Dairy Down Lane or Thriftwood Drive at those intersections. So assumedly, those improvements, you know, even, even the left turn lanes, the turn lanes proposed by the consultant would not be constructed as part of the school. And then the next intersection to the north, Smith Road at Stevenson Road, we, you know, that's existing conditions. We concurred with that. DOT actually did recommend a traffic signal there, so we would assume that a traffic signal would be installed as part of the school site by NC DOT. And we would, you know, we would be in support of that. A traffic signal's certainly better at that location than stop control to help with delays and safety. And then we get to the onsite operations. We originally showed officer control for this intersection, but that was when this was considered a public road all the way through. This is now an onsite intersection, so any operations onsite that would require something like officer control would really be handled by school staff. You know, we wouldn't have our police officers in there on campus directing traffic. If we, if we did propose officer control, you know, this intersection without a traffic signal probably would need it, even if it had the turn lanes. To the north, if it had the turn lanes, you would not need officer control if they're based on the analysis. It's relatively short delays. The, the cost of improvements at the two entrances to the school, if you move forward with the town's recommendations for the traffic signal, you're probably talking about a million dollars plus. If you're talking about just the turn lanes, you know, you know, maybe, maybe a traffic signal, but not, not the dual-left turn lanes, you could cut that down to maybe a little over half a million dollars. And at the north access, where you've got turn lanes, you're talking at least a couple hundred thousand dollars to do that. I will point out, the town, you know, town staff has identified $750,000 in our draft CIP for fiscal year 2324 to participate in the development of the school site, so we have, you know, we have proposed money to go toward that. If there's an opportunity to partner with the school, if the site moves forward, that may be, you know, money we could use toward improvements. If, if improvements were done, I certainly would focus on the access at Thriftwood Drive and Dairy Down Lane. Those are the critical intersections that enter the school most directly. Offsite, again, you know, we have major improvements that we're talking about, you know, running into the millions of dollars, that becomes quite a bit more difficult. So, you know, it's certainly something we can discuss, but not typically something the town would want to partner in. Particularly with NC DOT, you know, they're recommending a traffic signal here and a traffic signal further north, as we've discussed, but thus far, they have not recommended any turn lanes, so. And that concludes it. If anybody has any questions, I can answer those now.
Any questions for Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Dalton, in the traffic study, some of my understanding of school assignment policy is that it's, it's hard to know exactly where the students are gonna be coming from. So how does this study, how does the traffic study actually make assumptions about where the students are coming from to go to the school?
Well, it's, during the scoping, there is a discussion about that, and I would, I would defer to the consultant for Wake County Schools about, about that distribution. You know, it could, they, they don't have a whole lot of students coming from the north via Smith Road, so if more students were coming from the north via Smith Road, that would help the overall level of service versus having to come from the direction of East Williams Street down Sunset Lake and turning left in. You know, that's a pretty heavy traffic load coming from that direction, then having to make another left in. So, so that's, that's basically it. I mean, they're looking, they're looking at what the school system, I think, is telling them with regard to assignment and then explaining that to us, and we would move forward with what their recommendations are for assignment.
Okay. One of the questions I had was regarding possible future town improvements. Is it your experience that because it's on the edge of Holly Springs, is there opportunities sometimes to kind of partner with our neighboring municipalities who would be affected by this as well?
Well, I mean, you have, you know, Cary, certainly Cary and Holly Springs are in that area. We could have that conversation, you know, with them, but, but it is ultimately, it is an NC DOT roadway, you know, it's not, it's not a municipal roadway, so I'm not sure how they would, they would view that. You know, we could reach out if that's something you're interested in, but I'm not exactly sure how to start that conversation considering it's a county school system proposing a site that's not, you know, not tied to, it's not, it's not in the Cary jurisdiction, it's not tied to a municipal street in Cary or Holly Springs.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead. Bear with me, okay? Yo he trabajado 20 años con la, con transporte de tráfico. Las entradas como ha comentado van a ser Dairy Down Lane y Thriftwood Drive. DOT no más ha dicho recomendaciones, pero no han dicho que tienen que poner luces. Pero recomendaron que pusieran una luz por la Thriftwood Drive y la Stephenson Road. Eso ya sería costo de la, del condado. So no es algo que ellos tengan que hacer, tengan eso en mente. Y también le recomendaron que agregaran una calle, digo un lane al lado en Dairy Down para poder dar... Down para poder dar izquierda o derecha, para que fluya el tráfico un poquito mejor. Y ahorita va a pasar alguien más para practicar un poco más de las opciones.
All right, thank you so much.
We need her to summarize our stuff.
Thank you so much.
I'm trying. Lo siento, estoy tratando lo mejor que puedo, habla un poco rápido.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Dalton? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is that evidence for staff?
That is, sir, yes.
Okay, great. All right. Does there cross examination by council members? Do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Dozier, members of the town of Apex, town council. My name is Kenneth Haywood. I'm an attorney in Raleigh here on behalf of the Wake County Board of Education and the school system, and pleased as always to be before you tonight. Tonight, obviously, to talk about the future of Felton Grove High School and the major site plan is before you tonight. So we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I want to let you know that with me tonight are a lot of other folks that can certainly answer hopefully any questions you may have. We have tonight the pleasure of having with us David Neder, who is the Chief Business Officer for the Wake County School System, one of the most high-ranking leadership members of our team, who also oversees facilities, design, and construction, all their different capacities. And is here, and with him is Douglas Condon, who is the Program Executive overseeing FDNC along with Elizabeth Sharp, who's a Director with FDNC, the Project Manager and the Lesco Zone. We also have different consultants in every different capacity that have worked on this wonderful site plan that we have shared with you tonight. I wanted to, though, to pause for a minute before I get into conversations about the site plan and go back for a few minutes, for a few minutes to go back to the rezoning hearing we had. There was a lot of very good conversation by the council during that hearing. And Mayor Protem Dozier, you had some wonderful suggestions and items that you wanted the school system look at. I wanted to report back to you tonight that that is exactly what the Wake County School System has done, based on some comments that you had, the mayor had about public communication participation, especially regarding the neighbors immediately to our east. You asked, you know, could we do more than what the UDA requires in terms of, of having a conversation? As Shelley said, after that meeting, we did send out notices to over 147 different people in that community. Those notices, you know, we sent out addresses that we were able to, to work. We collaborated, collaborated with Wake County to see what information we could come up with. We sent out signage that was bilingual at the site to notify about the April 7th hearing. So we had letters, we had signage, we posted some information at the community mailboxes all to be able to inform them of what I call the community meeting on April the 7th. At that time, we had a, a meeting where many of the people here tonight attended and basically presented to them the same information that was presented during the virtual public hearing that was required under the UDO. We had many participants from the neighborhood attend. We had a Spanish interpreter from the school system there that night to be able to interpret the communication, both in terms of information given and also questions that were asked of staff and those responses. So we believe that we did a very good job of informing them of the information about the school site, perhaps give them some different ways to look at exactly what is being built, and also let them know about the site plan meeting that is obviously before us tonight. So that is one of the recommendations that you and the mayor had suggested, which I'm pleased to report we have hopefully fulfilled. Let me move on to say two of the other items that, I'll keep talking until you not, until you tell me not to, Mayor.
Go ahead, we're good.
All right. So one of the other items was you had discussed, if applicable for this particular school site, is there a possibility of providing some type of pantry for either personal items for students or for food or whatever their needs may be in terms of the particular community? We worked with our architect to identify where that might be able to be on campus in a discreet location, and I wanted to let you know that there's actually a, an employee with the Wake County School System, when this program began with Wake County through funding several years ago, he was sort of in charge of looking at the entire school system and where this is appropriate. And so that person's been notified of this particular school. Obviously, we're talking about a 2024 opening, and as the assignment plan begins to crystallize as we get closer, more than a year out from when the school opened, and we see who our population is and what the requirements or suggested requirements may be for that population, those conversations are going to take place. So I want to let you know that that is, the conversation has started and will continue through this process. Finally, Mayor Protem Dozier, you had talked about cafeteria and questions about cafeteria, how we're going to move the students in, where are they going to sit, and how is that going to function with the size of the high school here? How Bowen, who's here with us tonight from Ratio Architects, is going to be able to talk to you about that tonight when he goes through our PowerPoint to explain to you exactly how they have designed the cafeteria space to be able to accommodate the students, where we've had collaborative learning spaces out of the cafeteria where students can work with their teachers during the lunch hour period, and then also the design of the school, as you'll see, is there's a beautiful terrace that comes off the cafeteria where there's additional outside seating that also will be available to the students as well. So a lot of thought has gone into exactly one of the questions that you asked in terms of the ability to be able to serve the students. So I wanted to just touch on those three items going back before we now talk about where we are tonight in terms of the site plan. I'd like to take just a moment to remind us tonight regarding the site plan a lot of the information that we shared with you during the rezoning, and that is particularly with regards to the need in the town of Apex and the need within Western Wake County for a new high school. The Wake County Board of Education in the past 15 years has built nearly 2.5, 2.4 million square feet of brick and mortar space with 15,500 seats in the western corridor alone. 26% of those seats, 4,081, were built in the town of Apex. In the next five years of our CIP, the Board of Education plans to build nearly 1.3 billion square feet of brick and mortar school space with 6,400 seats in the western corridor. 55% of those seats are planned to be built in Apex. So that is the need of where we are in the town of Apex and the western corridor of Wake County. There's also the question about where are we today in terms of school utilization? And I want to share with you the same information. Data constantly is changing, obviously within any school system, but what was shared with you during the rezoning by Senior Director Betty Parker had talked to you about the fact that if that, you know, as of where we are right now, there is a seat shortage in Western Wake County of approximately 3,000 seats. That is including 118 modular units that are currently in existence. Looking at just Apex alone and the growth, the tremendous growth that Apex has had over the past many, many years, we're looking at from a utilization standpoint, over, a little over 1,400 of a seat shortage capacity in Apex, and that's including 48 modular units. And so when I look at that and I say there's a 1,415 seat shortage, I'm looking at a brick and mortar building. I'm saying that if we wanted to house our students in a brick and mortar building that is in a classroom for which they should be housed in terms of learning, not, not regarding trying to makeshift something for, that was supposed to not be used as a classroom, but if we have, do we have enough brick and mortar seats for all of our students in Apex? And the answer is no. We have a shortage of over 1,400, and we need to fill that shortage. One of the ways we're going to be able to fill that shortage through the high school shortage is with Felton Grove High School. We've talked to you before that this particular school is slated to serve over 2,200 students when it opens in the fall of 2024. And that is the, the school that we're obviously talking about tonight. So there are certainly growth in Apex. There are capacity issues that we've talked about. We've talked about the fact that we've got this wonderful school opening in the fall of 2024. And now, if I may transition from that to talk about the benefits to the community. Couple of different things. With this school site in this particular section of the county and now in Apex with the annexation, there will be water, sewer, and road improvements. We have the ability with that to be able to bring water and sewer to the adjacent site, which is what part of the site plan shows. And we understand certainly that there are always concerns whenever you're bringing a new school into a community. We believe that the benefits of the water service, the sewer service, the road improvements that you've heard about tonight outweigh those concerns, and that this is desperately something needed for the town of Apex. As you've heard, there are two streets that will be the driveways or the roads connecting to our driveways, Thriftwood and Dairy Down Lane. As you've heard tonight, the school system is committed as part of this project to bring those up to NC DOT standards, and then once they are brought to NC DOT standards, to request the state of North Carolina through its Department of Transportation to permanently maintain those roads. That is a benefit obviously to the residents and the community that is known as Brahtech because they will then be assured that the roads are maintained by the state on a continuous and permanent basis. Let me talk for a couple of minutes before we get into the PowerPoint about a number of different issues that have come up, and I'm trying to hit those in the beginning now so that when we hear the presentation, I don't necessarily have to take too much of your time in the conclusion. We've talked about, you know, what is it going to look like when the school opens? And I want to remind everyone that when the school opens in 2024, typically it will be housed with our first-year ninth and 10th graders. So the first year, we will not have really any student drivers because we will have ninth and 10th graders in 2024. The second year in 2025, we will have 11th graders. So we'll begin to introduce some student drivers four years from this particular fall. And not until the third year will we then have ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders and then be able to have the full extent of any student drivers that are given permission to be able to drive to school. And that's important for a number of different reasons. One is because we're talking tonight of what the status is surrounding the properties to the north, the west, and then the east in terms of Brahtech today. But given the fact that 2026, when we have full occupancy of all four grades, is more than, is five years, more than five years from today, five years from this fall, no one can predict tonight what development is going to look like in that particular area and what is going to be fully developed out by that period of time. The school system does, though, historically know what happens when schools are brought into a community, and we certainly have seen over the years that there's an evolution in the development of properties. And we fully anticipate that there's going to be an evolution in the property surrounding this property, just like it was with Apex Friendship Campus. And when Apex Friendship was brought before this board for approval of site plans, we've seen changes in the development of properties there, and we anticipate there's going to be changes here. And so while tonight we may hear a lot of discussion about what may happen when the school was built and what may happen when all the student drivers come to campus, we are using today's information for something that may happen five and a half years from now, and I think that's important for us all to consider. I also want to address a question that's come up before, and that is, what is your bell schedule going to look like? Is everybody going to be released all at one time? And I think the answer to that with high schools is, is there going to be, you know, a bell schedule for this single school campus? Yes, there'll be a bell schedule where they let out. However, as we all know with high school sports and the different activities that occur after school, not all students are leaving at 3 o'clock, if that is in fact the bell schedule. You have students who are going to be participating in sports, arts, all sorts of different clubs and whatever may be going under that school. So you're not going to have 100% people leaving at one time because of all the different activities occurring. That is going to therefore skew any question about how many people are actually leaving when the bell gets dropped at that particular time period. So I thought that was important to sort of point out as well. I also want to address a couple of other issues, and then I'll conclude. There is also some concerns that have been addressed during the neighborhood meetings about security of the neighborhood beside us, since there are residents who live in the Brahtech community. And I want to assure the board and everyone that's here tonight that the neighborhoods surrounding new schools work together. It's a community. Here, we have a common goal of educating our students in a safe manner with the security of the entire community, both the school, campus, community, as well as the entire neighborhood. If there are issues or concerns that arise from students that attend Felton Grove High School, those need to be brought to the attention of the principal. The principal has many different resources that is or her control to be able to handle that. Driving is a privilege. It's not a right, and those driving privileges can be revoked. All students are also a part of a student code of conduct, and those have policies. And to the extent that there are issues with any student that would attend Felton Grove concerning any issue with any surrounding neighborhood, then those on a, on a community-wide basis will be handled, both in terms of what the school can handle through its resource officers and its principals, as well as the community working with us to let us know those particular concerns. So I wanted to be able to also speak of that in terms of our community that we're working with. I'll finally add that I'm very appreciative tonight of what Transportation Engineer Dalton spoke of a moment ago regarding the collaboration with the school system. It's the first time that we've heard positively in terms of a willingness for, with staff to work with the school staff in terms of making some improvements. We obviously are handcuffed by what the General Assembly has stated in its policy, that schools using taxpayer monies should be used to build schools, and states should be using its money to build roads, and towns should be using its money to build town roads. But to the extent that we have ways to collaborate, both of the town, with the state, with the nearby property owners, the school system always will explore those opportunities. So I appreciate the willingness of staff to look at a CIP, to see what might be available. And I think after tonight, those conversations will happen between our staff and your staff to see, are there ways that we can work together? Are there ways that the school system can perhaps design and build some of these improvements with funding sources from our partners with the town or with perhaps the neighbor or anyone else? And so we certainly will always want to collaborate as much as we can in any way, regardless of what it is, because after all, we're here to be able to serve the children in this area with schools, and we always want to make sure through elected officials, to elected officials, that we show that we're willing to work together to the extent that we can. And so I want to make that statement to Mr. Dalton tonight, based on what he said in his concluding remarks. With that said, let me get on maybe what you're interested in, and let's see the school, and let's see what it looks like. And with that, I believe Renee Pfeiffer is going to come up first and speak in terms of the first slide. I know we have a PowerPoint that if somebody could cue that up, we will then walk through that PowerPoint with you.
Better catch them up real quick. Buenas tardes. Soy abogado del condado de Wake County. Nosotros, nosotros hemos tenido una junta con las comunidades en la área. Mandamos cartas en español y inglés. Quiero tomar cuenta que las escuelas de Apex necesitan 1,400 espacios para estudiantes. La escuela va a tener espacio para 2,200 estudiantes. Sería un beneficio para la ciudad. Entendemos que la comunidad tiene muchas preocupaciones. Una de las preocupaciones siendo la seguridad. Esperemos que trabajemos como una comunidad. Si ellos ven algo, que nos avisen a nosotros, que sería los maestros o el principal de la escuela y trabajar juntos. Los estudiantes van a tener sus reglas, pero necesitamos trabajar juntos como una comunidad en caso que algo vaya a pasar. Las propiedades van a cambiar. Uno de los comentarios que hemos hablado es que muchas de las comunidades se preocupan que vaya a pasar algo con los niños, con el tráfico. Pero lo que hemos visto que cuando se construye una escuela, a veces no se mantienen las propiedades que ya están ahí. No vamos a decir que vayan a cambiar, pero lo que hemos visto es que cuando se construye una escuela, a veces cambian las propiedades que están alrededor. Ahorita va a pasar alguien que va a explicar cómo se va a ver la escuela y un poquito más detalle de eso.
All right, thank you so much. Before you proceed, Officer Perez, can you give me the lights back? Thanks. Yeah. All right, thanks, appreciate it. All right, you can proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Renee Pfeifer. I'm with CLH Design. I'm a landscape architect, one of the vice presidents of CLH. I have 19 years of experience of landscape architecture and site planning experience, and I have been licensed for about 14 years. This evening, I'm here to present the site plan, answer any questions you may have afterwards. We've got a couple of other consultants here to present the building. And forgive me, Shelley did such a great job at presenting the site plan. I might repeat some of the things she said, so I apologize, and I will try to be quick. So, we, as Shelley stated, we did have a virtual neighborhood meeting on November 18th, 2020. We also had an in-person neighborhood meeting on April 7th, 2021, and then this evening, we are here to present the site plan. As you know, the applicant is the Wake County Board of Education. The property is about 66 and a half acres on 8550 Stevenson Road in Apex. So, this is a vicinity map of the site. The site is located in the center of the screen here in the white rectangle. The Briarwood Farms neighborhood is to the right of the site. The landfill is to the southwest. And then, we have Dairy Downs Lane that runs through the Briarwood Farms neighborhood as well as Thriftwood Drive. Stevenson Road runs to north-south, and just off the screen here is Sunset Lake Road, as we've talked about. And as Shelley did state, the site will be served by water and sewer. We will be bringing sewer from the Middle Creek Pump Station that's adjacent to Sunset Lake Road, and we will be running a line to the school site, as well as to Thriftwood Drive and Dairy Down Lanes for any future connections for neighboring properties. Water will be coming from the northwest, Smith Road, and we will extend that line down Smith Road and over to the east to the Felton Grove High School site. So, this is the site plan before you. Just to, again, orient you, the Briarwood Farms neighborhood is to the east, the landfill is to the southwest, and the residential, additional residential is to the north. Stevenson Road, again, is off the page to the right, and Sunset Lake Road is down to the south. There are two large streams that do run through this site. One is located to the north here, and it kind of branches off in both directions to the east. And then, there is a perennial stream that runs kind of parallel with the southern property line. Both do have buffers on them. The high school building, we have sighted it between those two streams. And to take advantage of the topography that runs east to west, we have stepped the classroom wings. This is a classroom wing here. This is a classroom wing here. And the remainder of the building is auditorium space, cafeteria space, gymnasium, administration. So, these two classroom wings sit a story below all the main portion of the building so that we can take advantage of that topography that we have challenges with. As far as circulation goes, and I will get into circulation on the next slide because I have an enlargement that you might be able to see a little bit better. But Dairy Downs Lane will serve student drop-off, entering the site, dropping off at the main entrance to the building right here, and they exit back out onto Dairy Downs Lane and then eventually make their way to Stevenson. Thriftwood Drive will house staff parking, bus entrance and exit, as well as students. There is a three-story parking deck directly adjacent to the building. It houses 631 parking spaces, and there's a surface lot adjacent to that. We have approximately, well, not approximately, we have 1,100 parking spaces on this site required per the UDO, and we do accommodate those. To the north side of the building, we have some athletic facilities. We have two multipurpose fields, six tennis courts, and a basketball court. And to the far north of the site, we have our athletic complex. This consists of a football stadium track, baseball field, softball field, some supporting parking for that, and then some supporting buildings such as visitor concession and restrooms, ticketing, home concessions and restrooms, and a lawn storage building. And we talked about utilities. We will be extending utilities to this site. We'll have a fire protection loop around the building to serve for fire access. And we will be extending utilities, both water and sewer, to both Thriftwood Drive and Dairy Downs Lane. We do have five stormwater devices around this site to meet the town of Apex stormwater requirements. Those are located at the low points of the site. There are two located in the southwest corner that discharge, treat the impervious discharge to the stream, one located to the southwest corner of the football stadium, and one located to the north side of the multipurpose field. With this project, we are designing and constructing a greenway, a 10-foot asphalt greenway, that will have an easement on it for the town, and that basically will parallel the stream to the south. And so, it'll be 10-foot asphalt greenway pass from west to east property line, and it will terminate at Thriftwood Drive. There will also be, to the west, that will follow the sewer easement, we will provide a 10-foot greenway easement for any future greenway connections that you all may want to have. Around the building, we do have three large plaza spaces. One is located to the north, and this has a grand staircase that leads from the gymnasium down to the tennis courts and the multipurpose field. We've got a large plaza space at the entrance to the building. This is the main entrance of the building. And then, we do have a large plaza space directly adjacent to the cafeteria between the two classroom wings. And I have a perspective that I'll show you in a few minutes that kind of shows what this amphitheater-style outdoor classroom is doing. It can be used for large gatherings, for, you know, cafeteria use, and it's got a lot of multi-use facilities. So, and then, there's a large grassy area between those two wings as well. So, let me go briefly to this enlargement that you see here. This kind of outlines how the traffic is going to be accommodated. Dairy Downs Lane is off the page to the north. I wanted to enlarge the site plan kind of so you can see what's going on around the building. So, we have parents that will, or student drop-off, I should say, that coming from Dairy Downs Lane. We have 3,100 linear feet of queuing. This is the drop-off at the front entrance of the building, and then they exit back on the Dairy Downs Lane. There's a lot of staff parking that's located along that drive, as well as staff parking here to the north of the building. Off of Thriftwood Drive, we've got staff entry and exit, student entry and exit, bus entry and exit, and visitors. So, as students and staff and buses enter, buses and students head north. We've got a large surface lot here for students, and that's how they enter and exit the parking deck. So, they'll enter here, and then they'll leave back on Thriftwood Drive. Buses will come in, and they'll peel off, and they have their large bus loop here. We've got bus parking along the side of the curb, as well as 10 bus parking, or, excuse me, 20 bus parking spaces in the center of that bus loop. We've got staff parking located directly adjacent to the building, as well as along this area, and visitor parking as well for drop-off or anyone that needs to come and go from the building. We talked a little bit about Dairy Downs and Thriftwood Lane. We coordinated and communicated with NC DOT many times, and NC DOT did come back and gave us the access road typical section requirements for both Dairy Down Lane and Thriftwood Drive. And what it is, is a 22-foot pavement section, six-foot shoulder on both sides, and then a three-to-one ditch slope to capture any water runoff from that road. So, this is kind of the perspective, looking at that amphitheater gathering area between the two classroom wings. As you can see, we've got a large lawn area, and we have kind of this amphitheater-style seating. It is accessible. There's a ramp system behind these walls of the amphitheater, but there's also large steps that you can come down. But at the top of the amphitheater, it's an outdoor gathering space. It's directly off the cafeteria. All these windows are adjacent, or the cafeteria windows. So, it's a really nice gathering space for the kids, and it's a great feature for this high school site. With that, I will turn it over to Hal Bowen with Ratio Architects. He can go over the materials of the building and the building elevations.
Am I allowed to cross-examine her, Ms. Howie, or Mayor John Gilbert?
Yes.
I am?
Yes.
I don't know exactly how I do this. Do I just stand here?
You can actually take the mic.
Well, I'm going to be asking her questions, so I don't want to get too close to her.
I understand.
I know we're supposed to be far apart.
I'm Emmett Haywood. I'm a lawyer here in Raleigh, and I represent the owners of the adjacent property that's improved with the Briarwood Farms Mobile Home Park. Are you aware that Dairy Down Lane and Thriftwood Drive are private streets?
I'm not aware.
Are you aware that this school site we're talking about is landlocked?
Objection. I believe we're assuming facts that are not evidence and have not been established yet before the proceeding tonight.
Well, she's done this beautiful rendering of what the school's going to look like, but it's putting the cart before the horse. They don't have access, and we'll have evidence of that. And she has assumed that the access will be via Thriftwood and Dairy Down. Is that correct?
We have designed this school site with the access through Thriftwood and Dairy Down.
And how would you describe this site as far as its development ability? Would you call this site challenging?
As far as topography is concerned?
Topography and environmental constraints?
I would say it's a challenging site, but it's nothing that cannot be overcome.
And you're having to build a parking deck, retaining walls, a bridge crossing, all of that on this site. Is that correct?
It is not a bridge crossing. It's a culvert crossing.
A culvert, but a large culvert. And what is the development cost per acre for this site?
Objection. Again, I'm not sure how this is material to the question about whether the Wake County school system has met the requirements of the town of Apex UDO, which is really the only question before the council tonight considering the site plan.
Do you have another way to ask that question? Is it that?
Well, my point in asking this question was that they're spending probably close to $1 million an acre on this site, yet they're not paying anything to destroy this mobile home park. They're not using their power of eminent domain. They're not doing anything. And this is a very challenging site that they should have thought of before they bought it, but, you know.
Do you have another question for her?
Are you, do you have any sidewalks planned along Dairy Down Drive or Dairy Down Lane or Thriftwood Avenue or Drive?
Not at this time. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I catch them up real quick?
One second, sir.
One second. I got to read back. One second. Okay. Antes de que pasara la señora, la que estaba hablando dijo buenas tardes. Yo he trabajado 19 años con mi carrera. Hemos tenido tres juntas. Una por cámara noviembre 18, una en persona abril 7, otra hoy, que es abril 27. La calle de Dairy Down se va a usar para que vayan a dejar los niños, o sea, los papás que dejen los niños a la entrada. Y la calle de Thriftwood Drive sería para los autobuses, los trabajadores y los estudiantes. El parqueadero que vamos a tener es de tres pisos. Y luego pasó la abogada de Prior Tech, y ella dijo, tú sabes, le preguntó a la señora que si sabía que las calles de Thriftwood y Dairy Down son calles privadas. Ella comentó y dijo que sí. Y le preguntó si tenían, si han decidido agregar concreto para sidewalks, y dijo que no. Y luego la abogada le dijo que, comentó que están gastando mucho dinero en la escuela y no pensaron en gastar el dinero para las calles de Thriftwood y Dairy Down.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gilbert, members of council. My name is Hal Bowen. I am the principal architect in charge with Ratio. I am a licensed architect in the states of North Carolina and South Carolina, and have been designing schools in Wake County for the past 30 years, including several here in Apex, one I heard mentioned earlier tonight, the Olive Chapel Elementary. And I'm here to talk to you about the building. We're really excited that this building is going to be the best example of 21st century learning in the Wake County public school system. Renee did a great job of describing this courtyard view earlier. The only thing I'll add to what she said is the space you're seeing directly in front of you is in the orange metal panels, the media center. It's directly above the dining room. Both will have great views to the academic courtyard, which is flanked on either side by the two three-story classroom wings. This image is the material palette. The, I wonder if, can you see my cursor? Yeah, the palette on the left is the main school building. The palette on the right are the auxiliary athletic buildings. And so, as you'll see in the elevations that I'll show in a minute, the primary materials are two colors of brick. The base color is a chocolate brown, and then there's a more tan gray color brick that's the primary filled brick. And then, you see the orange metal panel is the accent, the media center, the main entry, and some of the collaborative commons spaces. And then, the auxiliary athletic buildings are clad in a polished concrete masonry unit. And so, Renee, I believe, may have mentioned that it's a split-level site. So, this is the ground floor, which are two of the academic classroom wings of the three-story tower. And I'll actually go ahead and advance to the main floor to talk about the plan in the interest of time. This is the main level floor plan. As Renee mentioned, the entry is from the south. You come in through a secure vestibule into what we call the main collaborative common space here, and it's great for wayfinding. It provides access to the auditorium and performing arts spaces, the gymnasium and athletic facilities, and the two classroom wings. And as Renee mentioned, here in the middle is the dining area. And I'll go ahead and jump to the next plan. But before I do that, let me just mention that the school will also include a BDA, which is a bidirectional antenna broadcast system, which basically allows emergency responders to have two-way radio communications throughout the school and the site, which has become a standard for high schools in Wake County. But it's really important that the school is not that close to an antenna. Moving on to the, there was some mention earlier about cafeteria accommodations and seating. So, the Wake County design guides require that for a core capacity of 2,350 students, you have to be able to seat those in a maximum of three dining periods. So, that works out to 783 students per dining period. We currently, as the notes show here, in the area highlighted in yellow, which is our made kind of collaborative commons dining, we accommodate, and I believe that says 830, but I may have to pull out my glasses here. Yes, I believe we, yeah, 839. So, we're about 50 or so seats more than capacity. But as, we have a number of collaborative commons spaces throughout the school. So, if a principal wanted to allow the adjacent collaborative commons to also be used, they can increase that number to roughly 920. And this particular school, as you'll go back one slide to the prior, each classroom wing has three collaborative commons on each level, so that's a total of 18 in school. So, if a principal wanted to do something like a smart lunch, where maybe they reduce to two periods, you could actually, by allowing dining in those commons, you could accommodate half of the capacity of school. So, the flexibility of the school will be beyond anything that any other school, any other high school in the Wake County public school system currently has. Moving on, this is the upper level. So, as you come up that main sort of learning stair, you have the media center shown in pink on the left, and then the two upper-level classrooms that are similar to the prior floors. And I'm going to move kind of quick. Feel free to interrupt me and ask a question you have, and I just don't want to take too much of your time. The elevations, the south elevation, this is the main entry elevation. So, here you see kind of the stepping of the classroom wing, and then in orange is the main entrance at the administrative area. The performing arts and auditorium are located to your right. The image below is the west elevation, which is that same view that we saw of the courtyard rendering earlier with the media center in orange and the cafeteria below that, and the two classroom wings flanking. And then, you have the north elevation, which is the view from the direction of the ballfields looking back toward the school. So, here you see the, kind of in the middle here, the entrance that comes out of that commons. To the left is the auxiliary gym and some of the other athletic facilities, and to the right is that north is the view from the neighborhood, and it shows the view of the athletic performing arts area from behind. And you see the split-level parking deck, the three-level parking deck that is required in order to meet the 1,100 car capacity, which in my 30 years of working on schools is the most number of parking spaces that a school has ever had in Wake County. And then, these are the courtyard elevations, which the north and south are the same, and the actual, the parking deck view from the north, it was a little bit too long to show in one elevation, so we split it. And I believe with that, I will turn it over to Elizabeth. Oh. To kind of.
Mr. Bowen, I just had, I'll just a couple of questions for you. You said that the school is being built to accommodate 2,000
You said that the school is being built to accommodate two thousand three hundred and fifty students. How many staff and teachers is also?
It's approximately two hundred, and so the capacity is twenty-two forty, twenty-three fifty is the core. So what happens is the core is upsized a little bit for the assembly spaces, media center, cafeteria, dining. And that just allows for a little bit of overcrowding that we know happens as, as school and municipalities are experiencing.
Did you allow room for trailers?
I believe this site did not have space for trailers, so there are no trailers planned for this site. And Renee, correct me if I say something wrong about the site.
And are any traffic calming devices planned for Dairy Down or Thriftwood?
So I'll probably turn that over to Renee.
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had a couple of architectural questions. Is it appropriate to ask those now?
Sure, yes.
I just.
Step back, yes, sir.
Right, I appreciate the state of the art, architecture, design that you all are proposing, but, you know, in this climate of safety for our children and staff, could you speak to any landscaping or building features to try to enhance safety for students and staff?
Well, I wish, if I'd known that question, I wish we'd have brought our security diagrams that we include. Let me jump back to the, to the floor plan. Certainly, SEP TED principles are something we like to incorporate into all of our school design, which is crime prevention through environmental design, so a big tenet of that is natural surveillance. So you saw a lot of exterior glass in the school, there's interior as well. So that's basically about creating a more welcoming appearance to the community and eyes on the streets, so that it makes it more difficult for any kind of intruder or somebody who shouldn't be on campus to sneak up to the school undetected. Access control is another huge component, so we talked about, you know, when this, once the school is in session, there will only be one way for visitors to get in, and that's through the main entrance, which I think, yeah, you can see my mouse is. So you'll see that there's kind of, there's a vestibule shown here, so that will be breakage-resistant, security glazing. And basically, when you enter that, you'll have to get buzzed in by the receptionist into admin and then sign in before you can get into the rest of the school. If you've been to a Wake County school recently, you've probably experienced that. So those are a couple of the features. Renee, is there anything else about landscaping you might want to add or new?
I would just say that, I would just say that we're meeting the town's UDO for landscape requirements. A lot of what we try to do, especially around the building itself, is do large trees, so you have that visibility from, you know, six feet above is kind of the foliage, and then you just have the trunk. Other than that, from a landscape perspective, nothing.
Yeah, and I would actually add a couple of things in the building that I forgot to mention. We also, when we think of designing schools, we think of security and layers. So in addition to access control at the main entry, you know, we also provide kind of a constricted access control to each classroom wing. And so there will be doors on hold opens there, so that if there were any kind of emergency event, those doors can be closed. That makes it, well, you're trying to create just barriers, levels of barrier, which increase the opportunity for first responders to get there in the event of an emergency. And so that's the case for both wings. And then once you're within the wing, what we typically try to do is have three or so spaces, usually lab spaces, a science lab, or CT spaces that don't necessarily want a lot of interior glass. We have those as lockdown spaces, so those can be even more secure. So you have just multiple levels of security within the school.
Thank you.
I'm gonna catch them up real quick. Yo tengo treinta años diseñando escuelas. Esta escuela está construida estilo moderno. Estoy enseñando los diferentes materiales que se va a usar para construir la escuela, los colores. Estoy enseñando la cafetería, el gimnasio y las clases. Va a haber espacios para que se reúnen los estudiantes. En ese momento fue cuando la abogada de Briar Tech le preguntó cuántos estudiantes y cuántos trabajadores va a tener. Él respondió dos mil trescientos cincuenta estudiantes y doscientos trabajadores. Y ella le preguntó, tomaron en cuenta si van a dejar entrar, digo, tomaron en cuenta si hicieron espacio para las trailas? Dijo no. Y si iban a agregar algo de, para manejar el tráfico, dijo que no. Luego la, luego la señora de la ciudad de Apex le preguntó de la seguridad de la escuela, cómo van a poder la gente recoger sus niños, como en todas las escuelas de Wake County. Él comentó que ahora hay un sistema de botón. Las puertas están cerradas, tienes que planear el botón, decir tu nombre para recoger tu estudiante, y etc.
Thank you.
I think we all agree who has the hardest job tonight. Maybe the first and last time that she ever volunteers to be a translator. I certainly couldn't do it, so thank you very much for that. And I wanted to, in conclusion, that's all of the speakers that we have tonight related to the site plan. But I wanted to let you know, as you've heard from the staff and from your staff report, the Wake County Board of Education and the school system related to this particular site meets each and every requirement of the town's UDO that are applicable to schools. You have not heard tonight that we've requested for any variances or any special permits. We're meeting all the UDO requirements that are applicable to schools. And so, in concluding that, those are all of our comments. We're certainly available to answer any questions you may have as the night progresses, but I thank you very much for your time so far.
All right, thank you. All right, this time we'll move to the representative of the party.
Good evening. The last thing we want to be doing is being here opposing a school. Not a very popular thing to do, but what they're doing is just wrong. They bought a landlocked piece of property, and now they're trying to use private roads as their only access. They had other options, but that's what they're doing. And in doing so, they're not putting in any sidewalks or any speed bumps or anything like that. They're gonna funnel two thousand three hundred and fifty students, two hundred and seventeen staff members, through these small little roads where a hundred and seventeen families and five hundred people live in one of the few truly affordable neighborhoods, safe neighborhoods in this area. So our position is that this site plan does not meet numbers. One, compatibility, the development proposed in the site plan and its general location is compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. This school and all this traffic running down those little roads through a mobile home park is not compatible. It's just not compatible. It also doesn't meet the dedication of right-of-way that's required. It's, they're not public streets, they're private roads. They've been maintained by Mr. Cumberland and his family ever since they were built. And this proposed development is going to have a significant adverse impact on the roads and on this property. So I would like for Mr. Cumberland, if he could, to come up and testify. And I think instead of doing a choppy, huge lawyer question and answer, we'll have him talk about his experience. But before I do that, I would like to qualify him as an expert in the area of real estate law. As I said, Mr. Cumberland's family owns this mobile home park. Briar Wood Farms is what it's called, and the owner is Briar Tech Family LLC. And he's a member manager and an owner of that entity that owns it. Mr. Cumberland.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, I will interject an objection to a property owner being qualified as an expert witness. I'll just note that for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Cumberland, what is your profession?
I am a practicing lawyer with Whitfield, Bryson, and Raleigh, North Carolina.
Now, have you ever served as a town attorney in North Carolina?
I have. I have served multiple municipal boards, such as this one, for the better part of my career, spanning over thirty years.
And did that include the town of Fugue?
That was one, yes.
And what were some of the others?
Other local governments were Harlan County Public Utilities, the Harlan County Commissioners. There were at times that I had represented this town in previous years.
Have you handled real estate transactions as part of your career?
I've handled real estate transactions. Have also developed residential and commercial property for the better part of my career, thirty years. And so, I'm also a licensed general contractor and just generally familiar with development of real estate, particularly in Wake County.
And are you familiar with development standards?
I am familiar with development standards.
Mayor Gilbert, I would ask that he be accepted as an expert in the field of real estate law.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Cumberland, if you could, tell the, the board why you're here tonight.
Well, a couple of reasons. And Mayor and fellow board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I know from personal experience that you sit in a very difficult position. And I hope all of us here tonight will show a little grace to this board for your understanding. It's a difficult position that you're, that you're in. I would ask Mayor for a show of hands of those behind me, so that I can turn around and ask them not to repeat things that I say. I think each of us would like to be home with our families shortly, and so if anybody here on behalf of Briar Wood or Briar Wood Farms, raise your hand.
La gente que está aquí con Briar Tech or Briar Wood Farms levante su mano, por favor.
I'm gonna speak on some issues, and I'm gonna ask that you listen closely and not repeat things that I've said for the benefit of this board, so that we can move through the subject matter, and thank you for that, Mayor.
Voy a hablar de unas cosas quiero que escuchen bien para que no sigamos repitando las mismas cosas.
And Mr. Mayor and fellow board members, the proposed site does not meet the UDO. It is not compatible. Your site, site plan staff report says that in order to approve an application for a major site plan, the town council shall find the following standards are to be met. Compatibility, the proposed development in the site plan and its general location is compatible with the character of surrounding land uses. And I'm gonna speak to you just a little bit about that this evening. Last on the list is that the impact on public facilities, the proposed development shall not, and I want to stress the word "shall" in your, in your UDO, shall not have significant adverse impacts on public facilities and services, including roads. And those, those are, those are terms and language within your UDO. And so, following that, I would like to say to you that for three reasons, it doesn't comply with your UDO. First, it destroys a community that provides affordable housing. Second, it is a site that is inferior. It was inferior in 2014 when the school system bought it, but it bought it at a deal at sixty, six thousand dollars an acre. And so now, it's the rabbit going down the hole, they're having to chase this site down, down the hole like a rabbit, and spend close to a million dollars per acre for building pads and site work. Third, the school traffic plan presents a danger to children and others. Just a little bit of history about us. Briar Tech Family is a family company that was started by my father-in-law in nineteen eighty-six. He came from a sharecropper family. I'm gonna get some water. He and his family never owned a home. And so it was very important to him that people have their own home. In nineteen eighty-six, when mortgage rates were fifteen percent and very few people could buy a home, he developed Briar Wood. And he developed it with the vision that the residents own their home. And they do today, own their home. They lease lots, but they own their home. And so, what you do here this evening affects the homes of a hundred and twelve families and five hundred residents of the Briar Wood community. Briar Wood was developed as one of the very first COSDs, Common Open Space Development, in Wake County. Very unique, Diane can speak with you about it, it was a very unique thing in nineteen eighty-five. And the idea was, is that you were going to have pods or pockets of development, but you were gonna have vast swaths of open areas for the community to enjoy. Fifteen to sixteen acres of Briar Wood is open space. The idea being that people were to come out of their homes and enjoy the open space, walk the streets, be out in the woods, be out in the playground areas. And we can only imagine at this point what the traffic from a high school is going to do to Thriftwood and Dairy Down. Two thousand three hundred and fifty students, two hundred and seventeen staff. We're here tonight for the first time that, yes, there indeed is going to be a cafeteria. That was not what you heard during the rezoning. There could be traffic from thousands of people. Friday night football games. And the student traffic will simply overwhelm this community. We know that teenage drivers, and I've raised two boys to adulthood, and oh, boy, what a challenge that is. But teenage drivers, and this is the CDC, and it reports on its website, teen drivers get the facts. Motor vehicle crashes are the second-leading cause of death for US teens. In 2018, almost two thousand five hundred teens in the United States aged thirteen to nineteen were killed. And about two hundred and eighty-five thousand were treated in emergency departments for injuries suffered from motor vehicle crashes. That means that every day, about seven teens aged thirteen to nineteen die due to motor vehicle crashes. Hundreds more were injured. In addition, fatal and non-fatal motor vehicle crashes injure teens thirteen to nineteen years of age, resulted in eleven billion in medical and work loss and costs for crashes incurred during 2018. We were all teenagers once, and we have other things on our, our mind when we were driving. Kids have other things on their minds when they're driving, and you put in cellular devices, and you see what the recipe is. So I would offer that to the town clerk, that CDC article. Buses will be coming in, in addition to the student drivers. Buses are loud, they have diesel engines. They are unable to respond to the quick movements of children, darting, walking. We know that. The grade of this site, particularly on Thriftwood and Dairy Down, is quite severe. It's four hundred and fifty feet at Stevenson Road, and at the end of it, it's three hundred and eighty feet. And it's roughly about the angle of my hands, and that's what you're putting teenage drivers on. It'll turn it into a speedway. Lastly, and most importantly, the school system proposes no traffic calming devices. That is just incredulous to us. To put this type of driver and this amount of traffic on roads that were designed and built by my father-in-law to be subdivision roads for traffic in and out, there is, they propose no signalization at Stevenson and Thriftwood or Dairy Down. They propose no turn lanes on either of these roads at Stevenson. They propose no internal stacking lanes when kids are trying to leave. No sidewalks, no curb or gutter, no speed limits, no speed tables, no bump outs. And we know what happens when the bell rings. It's escape from Alcatraz. They get on that road, and buddy, it's time to boogie home, and they're just gonna be kids. But what happens is, is we subject. But what happens is, is we subject the residents of Briarwood to all of this, and it will serve to displace these residents of this affordable community. They are people that perform significant and important functions for all of us, and we know what those functions and services are. And if they didn't do it, it oftentimes just simply would not get done. I know that from personal experience in construction and other fields. And that's just where we find ourselves. I think your transportation engineer offered some very valuable insight. Overall, the takeaway is, is that you've got an F. With his suggestions, you can improve it to a B. But yet you hear no offer up from the school system of how to make this safe and calm the traffic. I would say to you that these effects will displace the community, and it'll create a real problem for these residents. We know that in Wake County in the Triangle MSA, Metropolitan Service Area, that there's a shortage of homes. A framing package last March that cost $40,000 cost $150,000 now because of the commodity prices of lumber and other supplies. All of this serves to push the hurdle of affordability for these residents just beyond reach. It's just the opposite of what my father-in-law had as a goal when he started this community in 1985, when interest rates were 15%, was to provide affordable housing. And it has done so these many years. The second reason to deny the site plan is there's just simply no access, and there is inadequate access. The best evidence tonight was the site plan or the exhibit that your planner put up showing the Go Apex Route 1, I think was the name. Every school that was shown, and I rode as fast as I could, but I didn't get all of them, but I got most of them. Scotts Ridge, access to Apex Barbecue. St. Mary Magdalene, direct access to Apex Barbecue. Apex Elementary, Tingen Road, direct access. Apex Middle, East Williams Street, direct access. A.D. Balcom, same thing. All of these schools face a main arterial road, and that's not by accident. Planners know that we need to put our schools on main arterial roads so that traffic can come in and it can go out, and it can handle these peak flows such as football games. You don't have that here. Wake County has made it a, as if it were a statement of fact, that Thriftwood and Dairy Down are public roads. Mayor and fellow board members, they're not public roads. We built them, we put them in, and we've maintained them for 36 years at considerable It's been contended that they've been dedicated to Wake County, but state law doesn't allow counties to own roads. Since 1931, counties have not been able to own roads in North Carolina. It's DOT and cities. That's why you get Powell Bill funds when you do your accounting to DOT. They're reimbursing you through Powell Bill monies to handle your municipal streets. Thriftwood and Dairy Down have never been transferred to DOT. We still own them. And I would say to you that if you put school traffic through these roads, and there's really no kind of way to say this, other than it's just creating a debacle. In 1986, when this was developed and the recorded plat for the subdivision was recorded, Wake County required a private road maintenance agreement. It's recorded in Book 3866-274, and it says, in effect, and this is Wake County registry, in effect, that so long as these streets are identified as private roads, you, the developer, us, have to maintain them. So the county's own document identifies them as private roads, and we have maintained them. Now suddenly, we have tonight a declaration that they're public and that they belong to the public. And so my question would be, where have you been the last 36 years while we've been shelling out dollars to keep these roads up? Nothing. It's just all been on us. And that's fine, as long as we all understand that. We didn't ask for this fight, but Wake County Public Schools have sued us. They've asked the court to declare that these roads are public. They're saying to you tonight, they are public, approve this site plan, use them as main roads, but yet that's on one side of the coin, but when you turn the coin over, hmm, we're not so sure. So we're going to sue you, and we're going to ask a judge and a declaratory judgment action for him to decide. But board members, please suspend that reality for a moment and vote for approval of this. That's what the school board is asking you to do. The school board has put you in an impossible situation, and I don't think that you're in a position to approve this plan tonight with these items pending. Too many assumptions are being, you're being asked to make too many assumptions. There are other roads. There are other ways to skin this cat. The high school was originally named by the Wake County Public School System as Sunset Lake High School. The reason for that is, is that that was their primary entrance point. As they got into it, they had a uh-oh moment. And the uh-oh moment was, is we can't get access to Sunset Lake, so we're going to change the name to Felton Grove High School. Felton Grove, for those of us that have been in southern Wake County, has a pretty significant meaning. It's been an African-American community for many years. Sunset Lake Road was once called Ram Cat Road. It was a distinct and unique community, and in many respects, still is. There is Reunion Parkway. You can amend your transportation plan as many times as you want, and if you feel that this school is worthy of your investment, then Reunion Parkway can be added back to your transportation plan, and that can be a point of access. We, during the discussions with the school board, offered alternate access directly off of Stevenson Road and not through our park.
Mayor Comalander, are you referring to Briar Tech Exhibit H and I?
H, H and I. So we own this lot right here on Stevenson Road. We offered to provide them that lot and 100-foot along our southern property line to get to the school site. And it was rejected. It was rejected because of the topography. Well, it's the same topography that exists on their track and all of the surrounding tracks. It goes from 450 feet sea level to 380, so it is the same, it is the same topographic challenge as the entire site has. That was turned down. I do want to back up for just a moment and call your attention to Exhibit D1, D2, D3, and D4. Those items give you a very good depiction of the neighborhood, character of the roads. It also shows you where DOT has put on the road, private street, to my point earlier about these streets being private and privately maintained. So I would offer that into the record. Those exhibits that I've referenced, I would offer those into the record. There are, and if I may ask the IT person to pull up GIS or Google Maps, he was here just a moment ago, because it'll just make more sense, I think, to the board. And while he's doing, well, we need a satellite view.
The school says its address is 850 Stevenson Road.
I'd also offer for the record, Mr. Mayor and fellow board members, this is about a 20-page document, a civil summons and complaint, which is the lawsuit that I referenced that the school board filed, so for purposes of the record, Mayor.
Mark, is this for you?
Yes, if you could put that on the screen.
Yeah, it's on the screen.
All right, that's great, that's great. Roll it and out. So the last thing, one of the last things that I wanted to chat about is the landfill. Much has been made about the word inert when describing the landfill that is directly south to this site, that it's an inert debris landfill. Inert giving the impression that it is some sort of benign activity that's going on. I have been to this landfill many times. There are large diesel bulldozers and front-end loaders with backup horns making tremendous noise eight to 10 hours a day, six days a week, during school hours, during band practice, and all of the above. These dozers dig, literally dig, 60-foot pits into the ground, and you can see the earthwork right here. They dig the pits into the ground, they lay the earthwork over to the side, 60 feet out, 60 feet up, and dirt. When you go into the landfill, you go through the access road, you drive up on top of the earthen mounds where the dozers sit. You can see over the top of the pine trees and down into this school site. You can see into our property. When these kids are at school, they're going to be able to look south, and they're going to see bulldozers and front-end loaders doing this. These kids will be going to school by a construction site that will never end. The North Carolina Housing Agency has stated that affordable housing provides stability that positively impacts children, their development, their outcomes, academic achievements, and future financial security. When quality housing is affordable, parents are able to invest more financially into their children's current and future educational opportunities. Affordable housing located in economically diverse communities also helps children access high-quality schooling. This is an article published by the Secretary of North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and I would also offer that into the record, Mayor. The U.S. Transportation Secretary will be in Raleigh this week, Friday. He will be here to discuss the President's National Infrastructure Plan regarding roads, bridges, and impacts on our communities. Earlier this month, on April 12th, he stated as follows, and I quote, "Roads, streets, and highways have historically come at the expense of communities of color throughout our nation." I say to you that the school system's site plan is Exhibit A in support of that statement. I ask you to deny it. Thank you for your time. Do I have anything I need to add?
I just wanted to make sure that all the exhibits were admitted into evidence.
Should I get this to the town clerk?
Which were Exhibits A through I, and then the additional exhibits, including the lawsuit, were all admitted into evidence.
Okay. That's everything I have.
One moment if you could.
This is Leslie Martinez, our manager at Briarwood, a wonderful young lady, bilingual. So pleased to, pleased that she's been able to help the board this evening.
I'm trying.
Thank you for your time tonight. Again, the site plan does not meet the requirements of the UDO. And for that reason, you should deny it. They have put the cart before the horse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we, is there any cross-examination before we do that? We've been up here, we've been going on almost three hours. We need to take a quick.
Can I go up there?
Yeah, just one second, one second. All right. Are we allowed to do that? Can we take a quick break? Are we good with that?
Yeah, you can take a quick break. I would just advise council members not to discuss the hearing with any of the members of the public or applicant or comments here today.
Okay, everybody clear?
Yes.
All right, we'll be back in session at noon. Very much for that much-needed break, we're back in session. At this time, if there are no other witnesses for the opponent, we will allow the neighbors, at this time, any neighbor to come up and testify. I understand that you're not an expert witness, but we do want to hear from you tonight. And want to remind you also, again, I have a spokesperson for your group. If you could designate that person to speak on your behalf, that would be very great to avoid a negative comment. So is there anyone which to speak tonight?
Two people would like to go up.
Este, mira, mi nombre es Monica Salinas. Yo tengo 15 años de vivir ahí en el vecindario.
My name is Monica, and I've been living at Briarwood Farms for 15 years.
Y creo que es obvio porque sigo allí porque este, con ese, el dinero que yo pago de renta, este, yo puedo llevar una vida más o menos con mis gastos básicos, ¿verdad?
I think it's obvious, with the rent that I pay there, I'm able to have other luxuries in my life to provide for my family.
Sí, este, yo creo que cuando ellos empezaron a hacer la construcción de la escuela, ellos nomás enfocaron cómo la vamos a dejar bonita, la construcción, en los estudiantes que van a estar adentro, en los maestros, pero nunca se enfocaron en las consecuencias que traería.
I think that when they were looking at the plans for the school, figuring out the colors, the design, the placement where the football field would be, and all these other things, they didn't take the time to look at the consequences of what actually building the school would do to the community.
Yo vivo en la Dairy Down, en la Dairy Down, y son dos, dos este, hills, there's two hills, este, ¿cómo se llama? Sí, son dos, una para abajo y otra así, así. Mi casa está en la mera esquina. Entonces, yo tengo dos niños, nomás allí, en ese cuadrito, hay como 25 niños chiquitos. Estoy hablando de siete años para abajo.
I live off of Dairy Down. There's about two hills on that road. In total, there's 25 kids that live in between those two streets, off of Dairy Down. And those are the only two places that they all get together and play in the afternoons.
Mis hijos en las tardes corren a la casa del vecino de atrás, de enfrente, de al lado.
My kids in the afternoon run to the neighbors behind me, in the front, the side, all over the neighborhood.
Este, yo creo que... Este, yo creo que, este, basado en todo el tráfico porque es bastante, de por sí, este, es que me tardo hasta 20 minutos nomás de salir a las 11:00 or llegar a las 10:10. Entonces creo que, este, todo este tráfico no, no es, es muy inadecuado para unas calles privadas de un vecindario.
I already take about 20 minutes just to get onto Sunset Lake because there is so much just natural traffic from that being such a populated area. The streets off of Dairy Down at Thirwood are not designed to hold that much traffic.
Y yo creo que al final de todo, este, nosotros, los que vivimos allí, son los que vamos a quedarnos con las consecuencias, con los problemas, o sea, los estudiantes, los profesores, llegan, se van, pero uno es la que va a estar todo el tiempo ahí, todo el tiempo ahí con estos problemas.
The only people that are really going to be dealing with the consequences is us in the neighborhood. The teachers, the students are going to go to school and leave. That's not a consequence that they will deal with. Us in the community are going to be living with that consequence for a while, for always, as long as the community's there.
Entonces yo pienso que siempre hay más opciones, siempre tiene que haber una opción más. Este, va a ser más difícil, más costosa, pero tienen que tomar en cuenta, por ejemplo, yo que llevo allí como 15 años, y nomás, a ver de ayudarme, me va a perjudicar.
I think that you have to take into consideration that I've been there for 15 years and that you can't, you know...
Hay más opciones, siempre hay una opción más.
There always has to be another option. There cannot just not be an option. There has to be another option. It may cost more money, but the option needs to be done because of the consequences I'm going to struggle due to that.
Sí, porque yo pienso que ellos pusieron mucho dinero en la escuela, pero nada en la seguridad de nosotros, que ya estábamos ahí viviendo.
A lot of money seems like it's going to be going towards the school and the building, but none of it going towards us, the community, that's going to be the main entrance and the main exit to the school.
Buenas noches, ya es noche. Mi nombre es Naieli Chavez. Tengo más de 12 años viviendo en este vecindario.
Hi, my name is Naieli. Good night, it's night. And I have been living in Barwood Farms for about 12 years now.
Uno de los puntos que quizás ya tocó el dueño es, nosotros estamos preocupados porque el 95% de los niños que viven allí...
One of the points that the owner pointed out earlier is that about 95% of the tenants that live there are kids.
Ah, ellos van por lo regular caminando a la parada del bus que se, que está en la Stevenson Road y la Thriftwood Drive.
They normally go walking to the bus stop, which is off of Thriftwood Drive and Stevenson Road.
Yo quisiera saber los que han hecho todos estos planes, qué han pensado acerca de la seguridad de estos niños en el futuro.
I want to know what the, the school has planned for the safety of the kids in that area to be walking to and from school.
Estoy casi segura que podemos hacer que esto no pase en el futuro, podemos pararlo antes. Te mando en cuenta que pudiera haber algunas otras opciones que puedan usar en lugar de nuestras calles.
I'm sure there's something we can do before anything's actually built or done that will not include Thriftwood or Dairy Down.
Ya que somos una comunidad muy vulnerable y estamos muy preocupados por la seguridad, no nada más de los niños, el tráfico que se viene al futuro para todas las personas que trabajamos en esa área.
Also, obviously, the security of our children, but us as adults who are going to and from work, which is going to cause more traffic to arrive and to get home.
Somos más de 100 trailers móviles con muchas familias que viven ahí, y todas y cada una de nosotras estamos contentas que Apex está creciendo, pero queremos que tomen en cuenta todas nuestras consideraciones y todas nuestras preocupaciones ante este caso.
We are happy that Apex is growing as a town. It excites us, but I want you guys to take into consideration how much this would affect us as a vulnerable community.
Hemos visto que otras escuelas, no, yo no he visto ninguna otra escuela en el área que tenga este mismo problema. Ellas tienen sus propias entradas y salidas que no interfieren con ninguna comunidad como la de nosotros.
I have seen other schools that to me looks like there is not an entrance or an exit through their neighborhood, as it would be, you know, considering that Thriftwood and Dairy Down would be an exit and an entrance to the school.
Y como comunidad que pagamos taxes, estamos preocupados en qué se va a ocupar nuestro dinero, y si se ocupa, que se ocupe para algo que nosotros sabemos que no nos va a afectar.
As a community that also pays taxes, we want to keep in mind that we would like our money to be used as something that's going to be protecting us and our community as well.
Esperamos que consideren todas estas preocupaciones de nuestra comunidad y que tengan buena noche.
We hope that you take all of our considerations tonight. You have a good night. Thank you.
I'm actually representing the Harmony Glen HOA. Is this appropriate time to speak? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for the time to speak tonight. My name is Cassie Langdon. I live on Rhythm Drive, which is the Harmony Glen subdivision. I'm a voting member of the HOA Board, and I'm here on behalf of the 28 homes and more than 100 people in our community. I want to urge the Council to not approve the annexation tonight and further deny the Felton Grove High School Development Plan. Before coming tonight, I've had the opportunity to review many of the town and county's development proposals, traffic studies, as well as previous meeting minutes from where many others spoke against this, this specific project. Our subdivision has only one entry and exit at the intersection of Rhythm Drive and Stevenson Road. It's less than 1,000 feet from both proposed entrances. At the high school, it's Stevenson and Dairy Down Lane. Apex Traffic Study notes that this school entrance is expected to receive more than 1,000 additional vehicles entering and 1,000 vehicles exiting this traffic in the morning and in the afternoon. Suggested that Stevenson Road be modified from the current two to five lanes, traffic signals be added at both Dairy Down, Thriftwood, Sunset, and Smith Road, all within less than a mile. Plans also call for construction of a sound wall to separate homes from the property, parking deck, football stadium, and many parking lots and athletic fields. I don't know if you're personally familiar with where we live, but I assure you that this area cannot handle this type of infrastructure. This is directly against UDO number one, the major site plan. It's not compatible with the surroundings at all. We are actually left off of all of these plans. Our road is less than a quarter mile from Dairy Down, we're the next road up. We would be locked into our subdivision with this amount of traffic coming in. We come to you out of concern for our community. We fear being locked in our subdivision every day by more than 1,000 new vehicles in addition to the interchange under construction at I-540 at Sunset Lake Road, less than a mile away. We fear the noise being generated by 25,000 high school students and staff, sporting events, and vehicles. We fear for the traffic safety of the people and children who live and play here. We fear being driven out of our homes, losing property values, and being forced to leave Apex. We'd also like to note that no notice was sent to us and our community about this public meeting on the 7th. There was also no signage put at the front of our community. There was only one specifically on Dairy Down and Thriftwood, but we are directly affected by this. Like to put forward that this violates both UDO standard number one and then number nine. As you know, the NC DOT is in a significant deficit right now. The proposed plans, we've been told, will cost millions. The DOT, I am an employee of DOT, while I'm not representing them tonight, the money's not there. So I just want to put that forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Buenas noches, yo vivo enfrente de la calle de Dairy Down y Thriftwood. Yo no recibí ninguna noticia que iban a hacer la escuela. Esta escuela también nos va a afectar a nosotros como una comunidad. Yo estoy representando a 28 casas que están en esta comunidad. Lo mismo que comentaron hace rato, estos agregarían mucho tráfico, la seguridad. Yo entiendo que DOT no aprovo que agregan luces, diferentes calles, pero yo sé que no hay dinero, pero tenían que ellos contar eso desde el principio. Gracias.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Alguien más.
Great, thank you. All right, this time, the advocate wishes to cross-examine.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. I appreciate the opportunity to make a few comments. Let me first address this issue, which has been presented to you about this road issue. One, I don't think it has any bearing in terms of a site plan because it is something that is off-site, and what you're looking at tonight is what is occurring on the site and whether we meet your UDO requirements. But it has been talked about, and I think that we can't let the opportunity go without addressing it. The reason why a lawsuit was filed, which I'm glad was tendered up as an exhibit tonight so I can now talk about it, is not because the Wake County public school system, the county of Wake, the North Carolina Department of Transportation have any question about what the status of these roads are. The reason is because of what happened tonight. You have someone who continually appears before you misrepresenting the status of the roads. And because of that, we need to get a judge to once and for all silence that. That is the only reason why a lawsuit's been filed. We need a declaration by court so that we can no longer have a misrepresentation to public officials, period. Not because we have some difference of opinion about whether they're public or private. We know they're public because the family that Mr. Kummerlander referenced in 1986 recorded, which is an exhibit to your complaint that you now have, a subdivision plat. When they recorded this subdivision plat, they, in 1986, represented to all members of the public that Thriftwood and Dairy Down Lane are public streets. It's not me saying this. I didn't create this map. The developer created the map. His father-in-law created a map, which is one of the maps attached to the complaint, the lawsuit, that specifically says in yellow, "Thriftwood and Dairy Down are public streets." Number one. Number two, they are 60-foot public right-of-ways. He further, on this same plat, represented to Wake County in order to get the approval for the subdivision, that by November of 1986, he would improve these roads to public, to North Carolina Department of Transportation standards. His representation, Tony Curran, president of Barwood, he represented, in order to get approval by Wake County, that he would maintain them, that he would bring them up, so the state would take over. So this whole nonsense about the fact that we've had 30 years with the maintenance could have been cured a long time ago had he done exactly what he represented to Wake County he was going to do in 1986. The fact that he's failed to do it and they've had cost is directly related to actions that he had under his control. What we're now doing for all these citizens and others is taking the money that the school system's going to use from bond funds to be able to improve these two roads, which should have been done in 1986, to state standards so that nobody has to maintain them anymore other than the Department of Transportation. But again, these are their representations that the school system in 2016, when it bought this property for several million dollars, relied on. It's matter of public record, and there's no discussion about that. Number two, there's a discussion tonight about, well, there's alternative access, why didn't explore alternative access? We made an offer to you about another way to get into the site. The alternative that was presented to you tonight and was presented to the school system was to come into the site to have to cross a repair and buffer area and a string crossing, requiring multiple state approvals, to then go up to the site from a topographic standpoint. It was an offer without any substance because it never would have worked for the development of the school site. As you commonly see with school sites that are brought before you, we have, for safety reasons, a need for two roads. They're offering one road, which again, was not feasible in terms of the developmental standpoint because of the repair and buffering stream issues. It was down here at the very bottom of the site, and you've seen before, there's two streams, the south and the north. So that's the second issue that I wish to address to you tonight. You've heard a lot tonight about a lot of speculation about what the school thought about this aspect or that aspect. I don't intend to be able to get into that because it was nothing more than speculation. There's no reason for me to have to address speculation. What we should be here tonight is to talk about objective evidence as to what the site plan does and does not show. And the speculation about how this school may or may not harm this neighborhood is nothing but that. Using terms tonight about destroying the neighborhood and all the other incinerate words that were used about the intentions of the school system are quite frankly offensive. Wake County Board of Education, for decades, and Wake County school system strives to look after and educate all children, no matter race, gender, religion, creed. And to say that we would go through a particular community because of some person's diversity status is simply unbelievable. This site was picked because there is a scarcity of sites to serve Western Wake County, especially 70 acres for a high school, which is typically the minimum requirement for a high school. You know yourself, it is an extreme challenge right now to find sites for schools. 70 acres, that's undeveloped, that has two roads at service? How many of those are, how many of those are in Wake County, in Western Wake County? Very few. So this site was picked because of the fact that it had road access, it was a rectangular piece of property, and it was able to be used for a high school in this section of the county. And so we are glad to be able to address any of the other issues before you, but I felt compelled to be able to address the main two issues about the reason why the school was selected, what the school system relied on in the time that it looked at it in terms of its due diligence, and where we are today. But beyond that, I appreciate all the time that you've heard tonight, and we look forward to being able to bring Felton Grove to the town of Apex in Western Wake County.
Mr. Kummerlander would like to speak. That's acceptable, very briefly.
Yes, I'll allow it. We're not beliaching about the fact that we've maintained these roads for 36 years. There is a legal dispute that they have created with this lawsuit and these roads. And I will say to you again, to characterize public or private as a misrepresentation is just simply that. It is a misrepresentation. It's for the courts to decide. That's why this hearing tonight and the consideration of this site plan is premature because those issues need to be withdrawn, resolved. We know that in order for a property to be part of something that is owned by a government, there has to be an offer and an acceptance of a dedication. That does not exist on the recorded plat or in any of the legal documents. And we have filed that to the extent that there may have been some dedication, which we say did not occur, a withdrawal of dedication, withdrawing these roads. This is in response to their lawsuit. That document is filed in Book 18,00312, page 939. And I would offer that into the record for the clerk. Very intuitive question was asked during rezoning. What's the assignment area? Mrs. Parker said, well, that's yet to be determined. I know very few businesses that stay in business very long when they don't know their customer base and who they're going to serve. That was an incredible response. Tonight, we hear that Apex needs 1,400 seats because of a shortage. That's what one side of the school system coin is telling you. But on the other side, they're denying the charter school here in Apex that is the Science and Technology School. They oppose that. If they're all about schools, they should be all about all schools, not just their school. So, you know, I question the motive. I question the statements. I also question what they're asking this board to do here in Apex when what we're hearing is that a majority of these students are going to come from the south, from the Holly Springs area. It's a real, it's a real concern. It is, it is... It is just a real concern. I hope that you will deny this tonight and I hope as part of that, you will ask the parties, DOT, Apex, Holly Springs, and the school system, to sit in a room and come up with a solution to this. This does not have to be a race to a finish line. There is time and there is time to get this right. Thank you.
If you want to hear anything, I'm glad. If not, if you're ready to move to discussion, then I will sit down.
Okay. Does counsel wish to ask anything?
I'd like to hear if you have anything, any response to that.
Certainly.
Counselor Stallings, first of all, I just want to correct the record. The complaint you have in front of you, one of the exhibits is Wake County's acceptance of the public right-of-way dedication. On October the 23rd of 1997, the Wake County, based on its ordinance, accepted these roads as public roads. This question about dedication acceptance tonight, you've been hearing, they were dedicated when they were declared public, when they were filed under the statutes of North Carolina is the conclusive presumption that there's been a dedication. And we have tonight, and it's one of the exhibits to your complaint, that Wake County subdivision administrator in 1997 accepted these roads as public and they've been public since 1997 through the acceptance. The statement regarding assignment that you heard tonight, "I believe that Ms. Parker and school officials are consistent anytime they appear in front of municipality, either planning board or elected officials." It is impossible for the school system to project today or last month what the assignment is going to be in 2024. You've seen the rapid growth that occurs every single year and to make any projection tonight about where the school population's going to be would really be offensive to you because it is going to change year after year. The school system goes through a very complicated process with its partners to be able to determine the assignment plans and they have an entire department of growth and student planning where they go through this issue. And closer to a year out, as you were told, they will then look at what the assignment patterns can be, north, south, east, west, wherever they may come from. And so by no means is this a failed business model, to use the term of art tonight. It is what has been practiced in all municipalities across Wake County for years and years in order to make sure that we, to the extent possible, can reduce busing and other things that go into considerations in terms of assignment. That is what was told to you a month ago and I'm telling you again tonight is what the policy and procedure is of the school system. Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? All right. Does the staff wish to give a number? Okay, all right. Is that your closing arguments, everyone? Okay, rest there. Okay, all right. At this time, before I close public hearing, counsel members, please review your checklist.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I do have some questions. Is it okay? Is it appropriate time to ask those?
Sure.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. Can anyone give us any idea about when the lawsuit will be resolved?
We had a hearing in front of Judge Holt last week and we have not had a ruling on that yet, so it is impossible to tell when the lawsuit will be resolved. I think Mr. Haywood would agree with me.
We are not able to, as the attorneys involved in the lawsuit tonight, able to tell you definitively when the lawsuit will be resolved. I will tell you that I think regardless of how the lawsuit is resolved, the site plan shall and can still be considered. We've discussed with you before about what the schedule is to be able to meet a 2024 opening in terms of the fall. And so the answer to your direct question is we can't provide to you tonight when that's going to be decided. From our standpoint, my representation to you would be, regardless of what's going on with the lawsuit, the site plan should continue.
And we would not agree with that if these roads are private and we contend that they definitely are and the site plan can't be resolved.
And did the school system consider other options for accessibility?
Counselor Stallings, yes. When they were looking at doing the site planning for this particular school, they looked at Sunset Lake Road. Was it or was it not feasible to be able to come through what was then the Kern Brothers' property in terms of where the, what we call the stump dump is located and what that would consist of? They looked at the fact that to the west of this particular site, is there a possibility to come Smith Road? Is there a possibility to somehow impact Mr. Dean's property, which is currently to north? All those considerations would require having to take people's property in order to be able to build a road because there are no other streets that directly touch our property to a public street like Stevenson does. And so even if it was Smith Road, you would have to go through property owners that own between Smith and the school system site and take their property in order to be able to have two roads come in to the site. So that was looked at to the west. It was looked at in terms of Mr. Dean's property and then they looked at Stevenson Road. They saw according to all the public maps, there are two public roads that access the site from Stevenson Road is not land-like parcel and that's what they landed on in terms of the transportation, to be able to bring bus traffic and vehicular traffic into the campus in a way in which we provide for the safest ingress and egress for the student population.
And how would you respond to concerns about safety for the children and children of the Mobile Park Home that the residents have brought forward?
We begin with the understanding that these streets are 60-foot dedicated roads, so they're 60 feet wide. So we realize that in terms of what that is. You've heard tonight, though, that the plan that Renee Pfeiffer showed you was a 22-foot ribbon pavement, so the entire 60 feet would not necessarily be paved. In terms of the safety of the community, you know, we certainly, from the beginning of construction, traffic all the way through completion and after the school is populated, is, you know, everyone is concerned about safety anytime we go through a neighborhood to be able to build a neighborhood school, of which we have several within Wake County and have since the formulation of the city-county school system back in the 19, early 1970s. And so we are aware of driving through neighborhoods and it is something that is not foreign to the school system and will not be for this particular site either.
And then finally, could you address the concerns about the landfill and any mitigation efforts that the school system will do in that regard?
There is a lot of comments about one person's opinion about how that landfill operates and doesn't operate. I'm not qualified to be able to directly answer whether any of those comments are true or not true, except to the extent that the school system has shown you that the ball fields are to the most northern part of the site, farthest away from where the stump dump is located. The building you saw is a tremendous distance from where the property line is. You've also heard of the fact that there's going to be a landscape buffer in addition to the fact that we're going to have a greenway trail before you ever get to the school building itself. And so distance is primary here in terms of the building itself and the orientation of the building compared to the adjacent property of which you speak.
If you want, I can actually answer a couple of the distance questions about the landfill.
Thank you.
If you look at page one of your staff report at the bottom of the page, I put a section in there that addresses that. I didn't read it because I, we had addressed it at rezoning.
Sometimes it's good to hear it again.
Completely understand? I just was trying to be mindful of my time. That's all.
I understand. Thank you.
We look here on the southernmost portion of the site. If you measure, and I did this earlier today, if you measure from right here where the edge of the curb for the parking lot is, that is the closest space, the closest area to the property line. That measures 361 feet from the property line. On the landfill side, let me get back to my aerial, they actually have a 100-foot buffer along all property lines that they're required to maintain and are not allowed to have any kind of landfill activity with it. So there's a minimum of 461 feet between the landfill and the parking lot. Almost all of that, I would say at least half of that on the schools portion would be, is going to be treed and vegetated and won't be disturbed because that's within that riparian buffer area that we've highlighted there. There will be some sections that will be graded, but those are closer to the school, those are not closer to the landfill, and those are being graded in order to put in utilities and stormwater ponds and the greenway section.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to tag on to one thing that Councilwoman Stallings mentioned is I would really have liked to have heard from an expert speak about the landfill. That's, I regret not having heard from an expert related to that.
And I just want to point out one more thing, that I think one of the most telling pieces of testimony tonight was from one of the residents at Briarwood, when she said, when they were looking at the school and what it would look like, they didn't consider the impact the school will have on the Briarwood neighborhood. There's been no talk about that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Did that come up at all in the community meeting that the school system would like to respond to?
I might point out, the first neighborhood meeting, my client did not get notice until two weeks after the meeting. That's why no one showed up, because no one knew about the first meeting.
Okay. We heard from you. Let me hear, let me hear from staff. Let me hear from staff real quick.
The address that Wake County had on file as the applicant, as the property owner's mailing address was incorrect. The town mailed the notice with, completely in keeping with all of our normal standards. It got forwarded to the applicant because his address wasn't correct and that's why it took longer than the neighborhood meeting time pregnant.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
I think they both want to respond.
Counselor member, was your question as to the most recent community meeting?
Yeah, yeah. I understand what happened with the first.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And your question was what about the community meeting?
And what came about of that with, based on the residents' concerns?
The predominance of the comments were concerns of safety. Again, you know, we don't want to grouse about the system too much here, but it was in Middle Creek High School with no directional signs to the auditorium. We got to the site, they gave a presentation. It was to be in a meeting from 6 until 8. They cut the meeting short, inexplicably, by 47 minutes, with people still remaining in the audience to speak. That occurred. And so that's been sort of systemic procedures all along where people have not had full opportunities to explain their circumstances.
Yeah, it got to a point that they say, we are not going to answer no more questions.
One second, ma'am. We got to proceed up here. So is there any other questions for?
And then I didn't know if the school system want to respond to that?
Okay.
When we had the April 7th meeting specifically for the Briar Tech community, which was after the rezoning hearing that I spoke of in the very beginning of our presentation tonight, the meeting we expected, since we sent out over 100 different mailers, that we were going to have to have probably two presentations. So we had it from 6 to 8 so that if there was an overflow crowd because of COVID concerns, that we would be able to allow everybody the opportunity to hear the presentation. You know, the first time and if they weren't able to come to the room, then we would basically repeat the presentation a second time. I believe that there were approximately somewhere between 20 and 25 people residents who decided to show up, even though we did all the mailers and the signers that we talked about. And so a very, very small percentage of the neighborhood that was actually noticed actually showed up. So therefore, when we had the meeting to begin at 6 o'clock, in which the people here that you've heard of tonight plus others presented, is, we didn't need to have a second meeting. We were able to accommodate everybody at one time, have the presentation, have the questions, and then we concluded the meeting.
I'll listen to her.
I'm adding on behalf of only 25 residents showing up that day. I am the Briar Tech manager for that park, well, for both, all three parks, but the office is in that park off of Thriftwood Drive. As soon as Mark Kummerlander got the notice, he sent it over to me. He called me immediately. I'm positive I have the email. If I will look it up. It was a day and a half before the meeting. There is 116 lots, so for me to print out, you know, and the notice was only in English. So as, as you know, majority of the residents are Hispanic speaking. So I translated it on my own and I sent out the notice as fast as I could. So I just wanted to add to that. So I think a lot of the tenants were, you know, they were confused and I had a bunch of the tenants call me. You know, I even had a couple tenants show up to the office the next day because they had no idea what was going on and I just wanted to comment that.
Any other questions from counsel? Because this could go on for a while, so I want to go ahead and just, are we good? Okay.
I wanted to respond in terms of the notice issue. Douglas Condon, who previously stated was program executive for the school system, was at the meeting, very much involved in terms of the notices that were given. Will you please explain in terms of what was provided to the community?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. In direct response to that point, there was notice that was mailed to all of the residents in the list that we provided with respect to the addresses. The notice, the letters that were sent to them were in both English and Spanish. The signage that was provided on Thriftwood and Dare Down was also in English and Spanish as well. We also provided the notice in English and Spanish within the actual Mobile Park community and affixed it to the mailbox areas. So to provide extra opportunity for visibility and residents to have ample time to see that the community meeting was going to occur.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last thing, ma'am. You got, you got one minute.
The reason sometimes we don't show up is because some of us, like me, I have two jobs. Now, my husband is taking care of my kids, so most of the family do that. I mean, we're not like them that they have enough money so they can have more free time. So that's the reason. We're limited. We cannot do everything as we wish. But in the community, like, I'm always in contact. We even did a group so we can keep in touch, but not because somebody couldn't have the opportunity to come, that doesn't mean that they didn't want to come.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Did you have something, Councilman?
If we're done with the questions, I would like to confer with our town attorney briefly in closed session for a couple of questions.
Is that your motion?
That's a motion, yes.
One second.
All right. Discussion. Call in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to the closed session. I'll go back in session and I'll go back to the council right now, remember the council if you have any questions. Make the accessible even tonight on checklist. You have the time to do it. All right, well, with that, I'll close public hearing on this item and that we counsel forward to deliberating on the kind of facts and climate UDA standards that they relate to the issue of approving, approving what condition is or denied in the mayor's site to the issue of approving, approving with conditions or denying the major site plan.
Could you repeat that, Mayor, please?
Sure, this is your opportunity just to deliberate on the items for discussion and either approve or approve with conditions or deny the major site plan.
Can I make a motion to approve? I'll second.
All right, we got a motion to second. Further discussion?
I'll say I had, I had site-based objections to the rezoning that have not been, nothing's been changed in the discussion. I plan to, I plan to oppose this motion.
I can say, um, there are some things that I've heard this time and previously that concerned me and I wanted to get more information, and I feel I have the information that I need to make the decision. I regret there's some things that I didn't get to hear or not yet resolved, and so looking forward to potentially, depending on how this goes, for those things to be resolved.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. With that, we're ready for a vote? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Okay.
Oh, gosh. Sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Your choice, Mayor. So sorry.
This is a very tough decision, and I've heard quite a lot from both sides. I think there were great arguments given on each, either side, and the witnesses that were present tonight made some very good points. Staff has worked diligently on this. I am very concerned on the impact that it causes of the area. Well, I do understand that we do have a capacity issue with the school system. So with that, I would like to see something different because I think it does cause an impact on the community. So I do oppose the site plan. So with that, it is denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Move now to public hearing three.
Let me, let Terry up real quick first.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Thank you for listening to us.
You're welcome. I text him.
Welcome back here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Great for me, good, okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm presenting rezoning case 2-1 CZ-08. This is the Cache Corporate Center amendment. The subject properties are located in this general vicinity. To bring you in closer to the site, we are looking at these properties here in this almost rectangle boundary. So again, we're east of Lufkin Road and Pristine Water Drive, we're south of Burma and Production Drive, west of the Gulf Range over here. Again, so I am bringing you this rezoning for approximately 121.3 acres. It is currently zoned light industrial conditional zoning, case number 18 CZ-19. The proposed rezoning, being an amendment, is also to light industrial conditional zoning. The 2045 land use map recommends industrial employment for this area, and the rezoning request is consistent with the land use map. So the, let's see, the applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on March 1st, 2021. The neighborhood meeting report is attached. Again, we've gone over that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use classification on the 2045 land use map. For permitted uses, all of the previously permitted uses are included in your staff report as well as the one additional use which is bolded, and that is for botanical garden. As for the proposed zoning conditions, I won't read them all in full. All changes have been placed in bold in your staff report. So for the second condition regarding front facade, the front facade and any facade that faces a collector street shall be a minimum of 60% masonry. Adding the minimum 60% is additional language, and the remainder of such facade shall be high-quality aluminum composite metal panels or similar. Again, that all is new language. Number five, we just updated multi-use path to side path to reflect our current terminology. And then we have three new conditions. One, well, sorry, number six, the minimum parking requirement shall either be in accordance with UDO Section 832 off-street parking requirements, or one parking space per employee on the maximum shift plus 2% additional for visitors, whichever is greater. Number seven, with the exception of development on lots one and two, which is here and here, each development shall provide two electric vehicle charging spaces. These spaces count toward minimum parking standards. And number eight, greenhouse accessories, greenhouse accessory to a research facility shall be exempt from the following, building material and colored standards of Section 4.53 and the limitation on percent of yard area occupied and setback requirements of Section 527B. Planning staff recommends approval of 21 CZ-08 Cache Corporate Center amendment with the conditions as offered by the applicant. The planning board approved the rezoning at their April 12th to 2021 meeting and voted to recommend approval with conditions as offered by the applicant by a vote of 620. I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Can you repeat what you said about the uses and the change?
Sure.
The change is, the change is only the last one or there, this 25 are being added?
No, correct. Just number 25, botanical garden is the only additional use. No, correct.
The 24 are existing.
Exactly. No, and no changes to 1 to 24, those all remain.
Any other questions? None? Here are none? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up public hearing on this item, and no one has signed up to speak tonight, so we'll close public hearing and it's back with council.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Right, motion second. Discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? All right, it passed unanimously. We'll move now to public hearing four.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's public hearing concerns the validity and advisability of a bond order issued by council at its April 13th meeting, which would authorize the issuance of up to $42 million of general obligation bonds for street and sidewalk improvements. Following the hearing, you'll be asked to consider adopting a resolution, adopting the bond order as well as instructing staff to publish the bond order. Notice, public hearing was given on April 17th, 2021. At the council's request, staff is prepared a presentation concerning the projects that will be included in the refer, or financed through the referendum. John Purvis is prepared to do that.
Thank you, Vance. Mayor and council, per your request from the last meeting, just real quick recap, and I'll keep it quick. So just wanted to go to the projects that was asked, that was what was asked. A quick timeline on this discussion so that you can kind of recall what we've gone through. November 4th was when we began the conversation about the projects. That was the first workshop, and then November 12, sorry, that's supposed to be 17th. November 17th was a follow-up on that workshop, and then December 21st, we sent a survey tool to help you prioritize the projects. And then on January 15th, you received a memo written by myself to summarize, there's summarize the survey results as well as present options, and as discussed further at the CIP budget workshop on February 12th, at which time you selected, well, there were two options, went with an option three, and I'll show that to you in a minute, and that was the projects that were identified for, for the bond. Real quick, this on the first of November meetings, this was what you were presented first by Shannon Cox and Russell Dalton. You can see the projects, there was 33 transportation projects. That was, now, six of those are the Safe Roussette Schools. They were combined into one, it was, it was down to 28. That's what you originally saw. After discussion and which projects met bond needs and which ones made sense, it was narrowed down to 14, that's these projects, and that includes the Safe Roussette School as a, as one collective project. From there, that's when you received the survey tool to kind of help prioritize and give staff direction on what you were thinking, and that's where we developed these two options. And the first one being 37350, those were the projects that were prioritized the most by council. They left a little bit of room if council wanted to go to the full $42 million amount that staff said was kind of the ceiling. You wanted to do so, and, but then at the council retreat for CIP, you wanted these list of projects. And that was, basically what this was is it added the Safe Roussette School in, so that's why I've mentioned a couple of times. It was the main projects you prioritized, and then Safe Roussette School was what you wanted to add in. And this was kind of the breakdown to get us to the, the 17 and 25 are what we were looking for. Obviously, this is a little bit more than that, but we would cover that through other, other funds. But 42 million was the bonds. This is the list of projects that would be covered by these bonds per your direction at the CIP workshop. So Mr. Gann, you specifically asked on the project, so that's just, that was what we wanted to recap and provide to you. There's any questions you have about what, what direction we, staff has received or anything else you want to discuss? I'm here to stand by and answer any questions you have. And then Vance will discuss the actual bond order.
Thank you.
I just wanted to have this discussion to, for disclosure of what's out there, and also do, tell the public if they didn't watch the workshop meeting that I opposed the timing of the Southwest Peakway connector on the grounds of very large cost and my hope that with the 10-gen road intersection change and potential state purchases of the S-line, other, other things that maybe could happen in the future, doing, delaying that project would give us a small chance of it being possibly in that grade, which I think would be good for my neighbors, would be good for the town financially. So that, that, I just want that to be out there because I, I thought about that project since I heard about it like seven or eight years ago now, so just wanted to have that as, as a public part of this process.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, here are none. All right, we proceed. All right, we'll open up public hearing on this item. No one has signed up to speak. We'll close public hearing and it's back with council for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
I'll second. Discussion, further discussion?
I still approve of the bond, I just wish my council members would, would agree with me in changing the order, but I approve, I think these projects were needed and we're behind in some way, many ways, so I, I support the, support the bond in general.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are, are we voting on unfinished business three right now? Because I know we're in public hearing, I thought we had.
Public hearing four.
I see. Sorry, still getting, still getting situated.
I, you know, I've always liked to hear what the public has to say, and, you know, we repeatedly hear from the public about transportation difficulties and increased traffic along with the, you know, the increase in people in the area. So I think this goes directly toward the biggest concern that we hear quite often. And then we'll be putting it to the public for a vote, obviously, to determine if they want to put money toward this, so.
Other discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? All right, it passed unanimously. All right, we'll move now to unfinished business one. This is two. One, two. One, two.
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, this is Annex Station 701 and rezoning case 20 CZ-14 Hackney PUD. This item was continued at your March 25th meeting, and to just briefly go over it, it is in our Western jurisdiction. It is between Smith Farm and Linden subdivision. A small portion is in Wake County's jurisdiction. It is currently zoned RR, and applicant is proposing to rezone to PUD conditional zoning. It does meet the land use map, and at the March 8th, planning board, they did vote to recommend approval in that, by a vote of six to one. And the applicant has also proposed several revisions since our last meeting. A sheet was placed at each of your seats with the five additional rezoning conditions that staff did receive this afternoon. And at that, I will turn it over to the applicant who is prepared to, from public forum.
Good evening, Mayor Gilbert, members of the town council. Thank you for, for hearing us at this late hour tonight. As Liz mentioned, we have added some conditions. If I could, I would like to read those into the record because I think that's required, but I will try to be brief to allow time for any questions you might have. The added conditions that we have proposed is our density, the total number of homes will not exceed 233, this density does not exceed 3.25 units per gross acre, a revised solar condition. If permitted by the electric company, the developer will install photovoltaic solar panels on the pool house roof for connection to the electrical grid. Photovoltaic system will be designed to produce 5 kilowatts, if 5 kilowatts is not achievable, due to roof area, the maximum achievable system will be installed. The system may be either owned and leased or will be turned over to the HOA. Install photovoltaic solar panels on two model home roofs for connection to the electrical grid. The photovoltaic system will be designed to produce 5 kilowatts, if 5 kilowatts is not achievable due to roof area, the maximum achievable system will be installed. The system will be transferred to the purchaser of the model home at closeout of the community. As you know, we have specified that first floor master bedrooms will be provided in the single-family portion. We've committed that at least 25% of the homes, detached homes, will have master bedroom and bath on the first floor. We talked a lot about the development phasing and the timing of plats in an effort to spread out the, the density or the development of sites. So this neighborhood will be built in phases. Developer will not record plats for more than 50 residential lots in calendar year 2023, 100 residential lots in calendar year 2024, and the remaining 83 lots in calendar year 2025. I would point out that from the time that we record the I would point out that from the time that we record the plat, there may be a three, three to six month lag from the time that we actually start closing homes and putting residents in those homes. Revised affordable housing condition. The development shall include five affordable townhome units, known as the affordable units. The affordable units shall be constructed using same-floor plans as other townhome units in the development. 100% of the affordable units shall be purchased by households whose household income is less than or equal to 80% of the area median income in Raleigh, NC, MSA, as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD. Each affordable housing unit shall be sold for a price no greater than $240,000, or 75% of the average sales price of similar townhomes within the development, as determined by a certified appraisal of recent sales within the townhome portion of development, whichever of those prices is greater. The deed out of the developer for each affordable unit shall include a clause that prevents resale of the affordable unit for a period of seven years for any price greater than the original sale price adjusted for inflation. If none of the affordable units have been sold prior to the recording of the final subdivision plat for the final phase of the development, the affordable units may be sold to any purchaser at market rates, and developer shall pay a one-time fee of $50,000, the affordable housing fee, to the Apex Affordable Housing Fund, or other nonprofit affordable housing agency or provider. In the event that some of the affordable units have not been sold at the time of recording the final subdivision plat for the final phase of development, the remaining units, then the developer shall pay a fee of $10,000 for each remaining unit to the Apex Affordable Housing Fund, or another nonprofit affordable housing advocacy agency or provider, and the remaining units shall be relieved from all affordable housing obligations expressed in this condition. I apologize for the length of that one, but that is how our attorneys said it need to be worded. I just want to say that I really appreciate the time, that, the time, the thought, the creativity, collaboration that we've had in talking about this project. I think staff and council have been very helpful at helping us to get to what I think is a much better project. In my experience, every project has its challenges, and working creatively, collaboratively, I believe that we have brought forward a project that is better than we started with, and does a good job, or a great job of creating a great neighborhood that addresses these challenges. I thank each of you for your time, your efforts, and I ask for your support. I am available if you have questions. So, thank you very much.
Any questions, council? All right. Okay, with that, it is listed as a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open up public hearing. Was there any additional items?
The public hearing was closed.
Okay. All right, it's closed. Okay, very good. All right, with that then, I'd like the council for discussion, the possible motion to approve.
I will, I'll make a motion to approve. I feel like they have gone above and beyond trying to consider all of the concerns that we had, and I think phasing this, like they did, offering that condition definitely helps me a lot, so.
Okay, thank you. Before we proceed, Lee, you have something to say.
I'm not connected any longer. Anyway, I was just going to point out for clarification, was that both the annexation and the rezoning? That motion?
Yes, annexation and rezoning.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Discussion.
I need to ask a question of Ms. Hoey, if I might. Ms. Hoey, I just need to come over and ask you something.
Okay.
Thank you all. So, I have a comment. I mean, my concern is, our school capacity issue has really been impacted, and I understand your concerns, but now I'm doubly concerned, because the school impact letter we had, I think, was potentially assuming the high school would be approved, and now that's not the case. So, I'm concerned about how this impacts school capacity even more, and we don't have good solutions yet, although I know we're working on it, and I just wanted to offer that. If this is denied, what happens? What's the process? Can, Ms. Hoey, can you speak to that, or what's, because I know this applicant has worked really hard at trying to meet a lot of concerns that we have. We have some competing interests. I'm very concerned about school capacity.
So, in the event of the rezoning application is denied, the applicant, the property owner, can bring forth a different project immediately? It would have to be substantially different. I think either the planning director or the town council determines what is substantially different in terms of that application, but they could not present the same petition back to the council until after a year's waiting period, I believe, but Diane might be able to come-
It's one year.
One year, so it's-
And in the past, the council has made a decision on whether it's a substantial-
Yeah, I couldn't remember which the, the UDA stated, so.
Ms. Ken, could you repeat that last thing that you just said?
If the motion is to deny, they have to wait one year to bring back the same proposal. If they make a substantive change, in the eyes of the council, they can bring it back as soon as, I guess, the next meeting. I'm not sure it would be the next meeting, they'd have to go back through the process, right? Submitted new-
Our recommendation is to not make a motion to deny if you are wanting to consider something else from them. Our recommendation is always to postpone and get your questions answered for whatever the questions are. It's much, it's much stickier and more difficult to unwind if you vote to deny. We would prefer there be a continuation of the consideration, if there are things you still feel like you do not know.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah. I had response to her, or is yours about, about her response, or response to what she said, or is it new?
That's, and, oh, go ahead.
I was just, my response to that, that comment is, what I heard, we had a, in case people listening don't know, we had a meeting with the Wake County School Board staff last week, two weeks ago, and what I heard was a very unstraight line between what, the zoning and the school capacity, and denial versus approval of the school capacity, and what that means for the school, because of all, it's a countywide system, of all the different things that are going on. I didn't hear a straight answer from really anything as far as like what is going to happen in the future, besides they have a current status thing. So, my response to what you say is, I have no, because I got no, no answer about the exact school, what's going to happen in the future, what happened tonight with the high school, I also would feel like I have no idea what that means either. So, to me, there's a lot of uncertainty, and this decision surely, when we just made, certainly plays a role somewhere, but how and where, I have, I have no idea. And I'm not sure even the people that work on this know very well either, for what it's worth.
Well, I respectfully disagree, because I think the school impact letter said that the understanding was high school capacity would be met, it was the elementary capacity that was the concern, so.
I mean, this is pretty far, it's pretty, the other side of town, how that, how it trickles out, you know, I think it's hard to know.
I could, Mayor.
Yes.
So, a couple things to respond to there, to my colleagues. Councilmember Gant, I think the reason we didn't get a straight answer is because it's not the job of the staff or the school system to give a straight answer. They were there to provide facts about capacity and whatnot, and I think they explicitly were trying not to draw conclusions, and I think we were asking some pointed questions to try to get them to draw conclusion, and they were intentionally not answering, because they didn't view it as their place to wade into what was a policy discussion at that point. So, I, I would not interpret that as meaning, I, I'll say, I don't interpret that as meaning there's any confusion about the state. I think the state is pretty crystal clear. We had a crisis, and now we have a catastrophe. We're in uncharted waters for where we go from here. I don't, it's, it's clear there's not enough capacity at the elementary level and now the high school level. 233 homes, like, I don't know how we're going to approve any homes going forward with what the action we took tonight, so I'm a hard no on this.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I expressed concerns originally, and, you know, spent a lot of time talking to the applicant, and appreciate all that, and was very upfront about kind of where I thought I was previously, and, you know, they're, you know, said, did work really hard, but consistent with the way I felt about the projects on that road, it's not a surprise that I'm very concerned about projects on that road, and I have voted that way. And so, I do appreciate all these things. I think I need to vote consistently with what my concern is, and not to add that amount of housing at, you know, at the time that we're talking about this right now, so I'm not going to be able to support it this evening.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I was just going to respond to Mr. Happy, councilmember Happy. What I also heard were policy decisions regarding year-round schools and hesitancy to do reassignments, which were unpopular, that also affect capacity. That's what I heard in that meeting, too, and I'm not, I don't have no, no desire to be on the school board, because those are hard decisions, but I think they do affect capacity here, in addition to any kind of new, new school construction that may occur going forward. So, that, I'm not sure how much that would matter in the long run, but I, I also think it's a better way of getting an education, where you don't have a summer break, to be honest, because like, I personally forgot everything I learned in each grade, but there's more capacity with year-round schools, and without going to any new schools, and I think that's, that's a choice they can make in theory in the future or not.
Sure. I guess I reiterate my point that we didn't have policymakers in the room. We had staff members who were providing facts, and that's what they did. So, I think directed policy questions you were trying to ask were dodged intentionally because they weren't policymakers. It wasn't because they didn't know and answer and have an answer, and I just think that distinction is important, because your earlier comments indicated you thought there was ambiguity about what's going on, or what needs to get done. I think it's clear what needs to get done.
Anyone else?
Just my comment, which is not going to surprise you all, we've got to figure out what we're going to do about school capacity, and I can't support this because of that, and I'm sorry. I know these applicants have worked really, really hard, but I think we're just digging a bigger hole until we figure out what we're going to do, how we're going to collaborate with staff, the school system, landowners. We've got to figure out more of a solution.
Well, I'd just say, and I know we had the workshop two weeks ago, what I noticed is that we were making a decision, but I felt like off the cuff, we haven't done any planning. We haven't sat down with all of the stakeholders involved, and that's what I was recommending that we do before we move with anything. You know, as far as completely cutting off approving rezonings for residential, and that's what I was asking for. We need to put together a plan, and I felt like we just rushed to a decision, or rushed into a decision to deny people all the hard work that's been done in this project, just based on school capacity alone. That's just my, my thoughts. But obviously, I don't get to vote on this one.
Well, I thank you for that, Mayor. You know, over the years, the, the reasons that I have turned down developments on that, in that area, have been, it wasn't all school, it was around other things, infrastructure impact, the people coming to us saying, you know, the impact on them trying to, to be able to have quality of life with so much development in that particular area. So, mine is consistent with the way I have been voting, and the impact on quality of life for a lot of development in a particular area. But clearly, we know bringing in more development brings in more young families that have school-aged children. That's the demographic that Apex tends to attract. So, that's a big quality of life issue.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to reconsider this rezoning and other rezonings in light of the decisions made tonight, and find what the next steps are before we can decide some of these questions. So, I'm willing to continue this further until we can have a discussion and better understand what the next steps are for school capacity.
Do you have an idea of a date certain, Mr. Happy?
I don't, but I'll-
So, although I don't think we have a solution in hand, we certainly have invested enough time, y'all have invested enough time. We would like to work on this further, if you allow it and grant a continuance or deferral of this case, a little bit longer, let us work and see what structural changes we could make to, to make this more acceptable to you.
Do you have a suggestion for a month out, a couple months out?
I'd say at least a month. Say a month out and-
For a month out?
It's really up to y'all and the school system how you're going to work out, because I know what you're working on, and it requires both sides, you cannot do it on your own. It also requires UDO amendment and a MAP amendment. I don't see how we could possibly have anything ready in a month.
So, possibly two months, then? Would that give us enough time?
What do you think Ms. Ken would be appropriate?
No, I think this is like probably a six-month project, honestly. I mean, to do it right, and to have a decision that's correct, you're going to want public input, y'all are not going to just want to change a map. So, I, I don't know that they have that kind of time, but I just, to do what you all would like to do correctly, six months is the absolute minimum amount of time, depending on how many meetings need to be held.
So, we're talking October, October 26, is that too much time?
Yep, because they're sellers.
Paul Stenham, I represent the property owner. They were here for the first several hours. They're under contract with Polte, of course, and I would recommend to my folks to allow as much time as Polte needs to do. But obviously, we can't sign something tonight, but I would certainly recommend that.
So, I will make a motion to, I'll withdraw my motion, and make a motion that we continue it until the October 26 town council meeting. A second?
All right, you got a motion, a second.
I just had a question from Ms. Hoey, probably, in the interim, they have, there's a by-right amount of housing they can build on this, correct? That a delay will, in theory, facilitate if they want to? And do we know how much that is?
It's, um, rural residential, it's one unit per acre. They have, what, 76 acres?
75.
75 acres, so yes, by right, without even coming to council, except for the little sliver that's in the county, they would have to exclude that, but the rest of it could come in, yes.
And can you speak to whether, like, the Haas Avenue, the infrastructure, that major, minor, collective, whatever category it was, would that still be required as part of that, or is, does it kind of-
That's a subdivision requirement, so yes, that would still be-
So, that wouldn't go away? Okay.
It would not go away.
Okay.
Now, all the subdivision requirements would still apply.
Okay. Just one per acre?
That's what the statute is for.
Okay.
But if we're talking about, you know, affordability, putting a house on an acre, you're talking a large house in order to make back what they need to make.
Affordability's out of the window, I think.
Out the window at that point.
If it goes that route. I'm not sure it will, but I think it's a possibility.
Right.
Maybe.
Okay. So, you got a motion, a second, to continue to October 26. Further discussion before we vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
That's four of them. All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to- That's a subdivision requirement, so yes, that would still be...
So, that wouldn't go away? Okay.
It would not go away.
Okay.
Now, all the subdivision requirements would still apply.
Okay. Just one per acre?
That's what the statute is for.
Okay.
But if we're talking about, you know, affordability, putting a house on an acre, you're talking a large house in order to make back what they need to make.
Affordability's out of the window, I think.
Out the window at that point.
If it goes that route. I'm not sure it will, but I think it's a possibility.
Right.
Maybe.
Okay. So, you got a motion, a second, to continue to October twenty-sixth. Throw the discussion before we vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
That's four of them. All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to unfinished business three. Vance Holloman.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. You have before you a request to pass a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of up to five million dollars of general obligation bonds for street and sidewalk improvements. These bonds were approved by the voters in 2015. The resolution also asks that you authorize the execution and delivery of the bond purchase agreement. The bonds are being privately placed with Pinnacle Bank. We have a rate of one point oh-five percent for a ten-year amortization, which is a very, very good rate. The bond purchase agreement is substantially in its final form. Attorneys on both sides have reviewed it and signed off. The local government commission is expected to give approval, not to the bonds themselves, but to the sale of the bonds by private placement. At their May fourth meeting, if that occurs, we anticipate a closing on May twentieth. Funds are going to be used for paving maintenance. I believe we had discussions about these particular bonds in the past. Is there anything I can...
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Pass unanimously. I guess we need a motion. I talked to manager Purvis about moving unfinished business four, new business one and two to another meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. And if there are a few other, and if new business one and two be moved, because I already sent this back home. But unfinished business four is completely up to you. Vance is here.
Right.
If you want to hear it, it's up to you.
And I think...
This is that one and new business three.
And we have the cutoffs kind of linked a little bit to this. So, I'm ready to roll on this one.
Okay.
If the council's a minimal...
I'd have to excuse myself from this.
Okay, so you, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to continue new business one and two to next meeting.
All right. Okay.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, a second, to you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, it passes unanimously. All right. So, we're here, unfinished business four.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, you're being asked to make a motion to approve proposed guidelines for the town's customer assistance program, as well as approve an agreement with Western Wake Crisis Ministry, who has agreed to assist the town in determining eligibility for participation in the program and authorize staff to execute that agreement. In addition, you're requested to approve budget amendment number eighteen, which provides funding for the benefits, for the, for customers, as well as the administrative costs involved in the determination of eligibility. Staff's been working on this for a bit now. We're very fortunate, Western Wake has agreed to assist us in the eligibility determination. We'll reimburse them for certain administrative fees. And the documents, similar documents to these you see this evening were presented to council at the April thirteenth meeting. We were requested at that time to look at some alternate guidelines as far as eligibility, maybe a prorata approach, rather than simply everyone who was two-hundred percent or below getting the full benefit. We were asked to look at a prorata approach. We conferred with Western Wake on that matter. They assured us that would not be a problem as far as them helping us determine eligibility. They did recommend to us that if we were going to do that, not to start the proration at a hundred percent, but rather start it at a hundred and fifty percent. So, what staff, based upon that, your request for, I believe, three prorated levels, as well as the comments from Western Wake, we have recommended a structure where I ask everyone who is at a hundred and fifty percent or less of the poverty level would receive a hundred percent of the benefit. Everyone from a hundred and fifty-one percent to a hundred and seventy-five percent would receive seventy-five percent of the benefit. Hundred percent of the benefit, the maximum payment or maximum credit to an account would be six hundred and thirty-six dollars. Seventy-five percent would be four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Also, a third grouping, everyone between a hundred and seventy-six and two-hundred percent of the poverty level would receive fifty percent of the benefit, which would be three hundred and eighteen thousand, oh, three hundred and eighteen dollars. That'd be something. You have a few charts included in your materials. One I'll go to first is the hourly wage chart. This was put together for the hundred percent of poverty level, the hundred and fifty percent of poverty level, and then the two-hundred percent of poverty level. And one thing that caused us to recommend the cutoff at one-fifty, looking at this, is the fact, person at a hundred percent of the poverty level, a one-person household, would be six dollars and forty-four cents an hour. If you go to one-ten, that person will be making sixty-five cent more an hour, or seven dollars and nine cents. But that person would only be eligible to receive, you know, a fraction of the benefit. And whereas the person at six forty-four would receive it all, it seemed like a very minimal amount of additional wages to make a distinction between those groups as far as the amount they could receive. So, staff is recommending that, of course, council can set that at what level they choose. But if you do choose to prorate, we are recommending that the full benefit, again, these three groupings, full benefit through one-fifty, seventy-five percent, one-fifty-one to one-seventy-five, and one-seventy-six to two-hundred, fifty percent, if you choose to prorate that. We've updated the guidance that's in this agenda item. We added some comments to that, or some sections to that. That would appear in the second page of the guidance under administration of awards. This additional language was added that put the proration in place.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, so when, I was the one, I think, to initiate the idea of the prorating and the, with the idea that there's two consequences, I guess, of doing that. One is that, in theory, more people, if we run out of money, if we run out of money in this whole program, more people may get helped by this if it's, if there's not an increase in the amount. But there could also be the same thing where we increase the amounts on the low end if we are decreasing on the high end, kind of come out the same way, help the same number of people, in theory, if they're all spread out across those income ranges. So, what I don't know is where people fall in this range, and also, I don't know, are there a lot of people who are below one-fifty that percent that owe more than six thirty-six, or whatever that number was? I don't, yeah, so, I, I'm thinking, yeah, I don't know if, helping out more people, but if we don't run out of money, it's kind of, not my intent necessarily to give people less money, it's just, I thought we could up, up the lower end and kind of have it scaled so that the middle is kind of where we were. But I just don't know, I don't have enough information to know where these people fall in this income range, the most number of people. And I guess we're not going to know that until the program is...
It's very tough to know how many will in fact be eligible to take advantage of it. One thing I will, and I mentioned this last week, I will point out, is that the, precisely two-thirds of the customers with delinquent balances have the average balance or less. And then, we actually have balances, I believe, as high as almost five thousand dollars. People have outstanding, but that's above a thousand to the five thousand, that's only thirteen percent of our customers. And again, two-thirds are at the average or less. And again, what their various income levels are, I do not know.
In theory, the five thousand person could be, they could be well above the, so, we have no idea.
Could well be, yes, sir. It's very...
Not even eligible. Okay.
So, I do, and I wasn't here for this meeting, and I do appreciate the thought around, you know, sort of a sliding, a fee scale, sliding scale. But I do want to bring your attention to, I mean, these, these income numbers are still very low. And so, off the top of my head, so probably a hundred percent of poverty is maybe twelve thousand dollars a year. So, that means one, two-hundred percent is double that. So, that's not a whole lot of money. So, I think that when you think about, you know, and I'm probably off, it's probably two years off, but you think about what that money is, you know, and people think, oh, two-hundred percent is probably, you know, fifty thousand, but it's not. So, I think that's what we should think about. Maybe there's a way, when Western Wake Crisis Ministry is doing intake, to sort of get a feel for them, and then to come back to us and kind of give us a feel for what you're asking. Because I do want to help people, but still, even given someone, the fifty percent of outstanding balance up to three eighteen, this person is still making probably below thirty thousand dollars a year.
I was actually wondering, as I was looking at these numbers, whether we assume that the money will not run out immediately, and we actually up, we up the numbers to something like eight hundred, six hundred, four hundred?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
From six to, whatever it is, four to three hundred, something?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, I would add, we don't want the, you know, what's the phrase? Perfect to be the enemy of the good here? Like, we have the opportunity to adjust this program as we go. What we, what we do tonight isn't necessarily set in stone. We could come back in a month or ninety days and see how it's going. Are not enough people qualifying because of the income levels too low? Is everyone getting, we could, we can get some data from, from the program as we roll it out. So, I think we could sit here all night and guess at levels, but we might need to, might need to see how it actually tests in the community before we make substantive changes. So, my recommendation is just to go with the original program. I think prorating is a good idea. Maybe we go there eventually, but my preference would be, I'm not opposed to it. If you want to do prorate, that's fine. But my, my preference would be just to go with the original program, come back with a report from staff in a month or two about the progress, and maybe adjust there with some, after we have that information.
Can you remind us what the original clause was before you prorated? What was your...
It would be anyone who was at two-hundred percent or less would receive up to six hundred and thirty-six dollars. If they have an outstanding balance, which is less, they would receive less at the time they apply, but they could receive up to six hundred and thirty-six dollars. And if you look at the, the guidelines are included in tonight's agenda item, what you'd need to do, that, again, first paragraph on the second page, administration of awards, the first two sentences would remain, and then the third sentence beginning within order, the remainder of that paragraph from that point forward would be deleted if you choose to eliminate the proration.
Because I was just thinking, the long-term viability of the program, I think the prorating would be where we might go, just because it makes the maximum amount of impact to the most number of people, I think, who really need it. But absence having the information about where the people are falling, and like, there's a ton of people that owe eight hundred dollars who are making zero income right now, or very, very below a hundred percent or fifty percent, they're not going to be able to get the full thing paid for right now. They'll be, they'll be capped. I don't know, I don't know if those people exist or not, but that would be something that would be unfortunate, and the prorating, especially if we up it a little bit, would be covered. I'm not, it may cover nobody. I may be imagining someone that doesn't exist.
I've said this in relation to Western Wake before, but because I'm on their board, I have to recuse myself from voting on this.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor Protem, do you have any advice, given that I know you work with a lot of poverty issues in your policy work?
I mean, other than just stating what the two-hundred percent is still a known number, and we're not even factoring in the family size, because that's another thing, too. You know, if you make thirty-five thousand dollars, family two, or if it's family of three or four, you know, we haven't even talked about that, and so...
The table isn't there.
No, but I'm saying, we haven't talked about it, like, as far, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you have two, you know, which is a lot. So, I'm just saying that there's a lot of varying factors. So, I, I mean, I, stepping it, doing steps is, unless we had a lot more money, like, if it was like, coming like, six hundred was, you know, the higher income, and then went down, or something, I mean, went up that way, be different, but three hundred dollars, I don't know how much that may, may help somebody that's still making two-hundred percent of poverty. I mean, it's, it's called that for a reason. It's, the person's not making enough money to a living wage. And so, I worry about that. But I do think that we can rely on, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with doing either thing, but I think that we need to go ahead, like you said, start something, but that rely on the professionals when they're to an intake, to kind, to give us more information. Maybe we revisit that and see how it's going within, you know, a couple of weeks or so.
Well, I think the one issue is that most of the money is going to go out really fast, right? I mean, they're going to apply this program in...
Well, I think there'll be capacity limitations that may impact that. I mean, that's been one of the concerns and why the appointment system was set up, was because there will be some folks brought on to help Western Wake, but there is going to be a limit to how, how many they can see, depending, you know, and if, so, it's anticipated, that's why we had adopted the, the idea that we were going to allow a person to have their appointment and have their eligibility determination made before we cut them off, presuming they had made an appointment with Western Wake. And Western Wake will report, you know, who has made an appointment with us, and they'll be on our, you know, don't cut off list until an eligibility determination can be made. And the concern there was how quickly we could process people. I mean, it just depends on how many end up, you know, going for this. But if you get a hundred people, I mean, I, I mean, that would take a few weeks, maybe months, to get all of them squared away. So, I mean, it would, you know, it's, it's not going to, you know, the capacity will be the issue, and I think it will go out slowly initially.
So, in saying that, it does sound like there'd be more administrative time devoted to figuring out what percentage of poverty folks' income is versus this is your income. Now, you got to figure out percentages, and then, I, so, I actually would prefer to do with the original way that was proposed by Mr. Holloman, which cuts down on sort of the administrative part of figuring out the percentages and go from there. That would be my suggestion.
Well, they're going to have the percentages already, to even become eligible, they're going to have the percentage there. It's kind of below two hundred.
Right. That's real easy than doing one-fifty, one-seventy-five, two-hundred. Everybody's two-hundred, and we go, we kick rolling. And I mean, I think that's just the easier thing. That's just me related to administrative burden.
Can I speak to my experience? When I was, when I was growing up, there were probably four or five years where my parents made less than ten thousand dollars a year. And to, I can't tell you how many times our electricity was cut off, our water was cut off, off and on, and just to have the six hundred dollars to pay for back bills and stuff like that would have been amazing. So, just saying.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to go back to the original plan, and we did, and direct, you know, so, my motion is to approve the originally proposed guidelines for town's customer assistance program, and approve an agreement with Western Wake Crisis Ministry to assist the town, to hear back from them really quickly about how this is going. Maybe that's within, I don't know, a two-week period of time, and that's, and that's my motion. Thank you, Audrey.
Oh, you know, if I could request, we also authorize staff to execute the agreement and approve the budget amendment.
And authorize staff to execute the agreement and approve the budget ordinance amendment.
We got to have the amendment, or we can't help anyone.
Right. I second all that. Okay.
Can I ask about the, the budget part? We've got this, the Recovery Act, which, we talked about this in the budget meeting, and is it prudent to put any language in here that says general fund or returned investment? Or if, is there an or we can put in that says if we get this fund, if these recovery funds are eligible to be used, use those instead if we know soon? Or can we do an or in a budget amendment if there's two different funds possibly accessible?
We could come out the wash.
Come out the wash?
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, I think it's overcomplicating. Like, if the money comes in, we'll figure it out.
I have a small concern, except that money, it'll be so limited, we may not be able to use it all. I got, I have concerns.
I'm just, I'm going to tell you that the ARP funds are way less restrictive than the previous ones.
Right. I hope so. I hope so.
It is. It just is. I'm telling you, it just is. It's already been, it just is.
Come out the wash, it's fine. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, pass unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business three. Purvis.
Think I'm the last one, standing between everybody and, well, that's, I mean, the mayor might have already told him he didn't have to give his update.
Are you spinning that?
He just spends his whole time here, man.
So, Mayor, Mayor, members of council, new business three is a possible motion to approve road and utility infrastructure reimbursement agreement with B.I.N., Apex LLC, and authorize the town manager to execute the same. This is for Burma Drive, the first extension, phase one, if you will, out at the Cash Corporate Center. That was part of a project that we were working on. We were building that, that first leg of the road in utilities, and as we were working on the developers' agreement and tried to coordinate... And as we were working on the developers' agreement and trying to coordinate the schedule and access and everything else, I mean, the developers' agreement was getting very tied up in that. And then finally, they were like, well, it would just be easier if we build it and reimburse them, which we do in a lot of development projects. And so we're like, yes, we wanted that all along. And so they agreed to that. And so Lori and her team and BIN, they've worked through this. And so this is just the developers' agreement. They're going to build the road per our specs. It's our, it's public bid, public specs, all that. But then we'll reimburse them. So that's what this agreement is for. And we are actually ready to go. The bids were, came in today, actually, so. And they were under engineering estimate. So we were actually very happy with the, with the bids.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Motion through, second. Discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, passing unanimously. Thank you, sir. You up, sir?
I've been here for five hours, I have to say something.
You have to.
You got at least 30 minutes.
Retract that statement, please.
I thought I would at least give you something to brighten your night. No, no brain searching, you don't have to talk about it. We get, we got notice today or yesterday, the Rotary is going to have a Christmas parade this year. And I am telling you tonight, it's going to be on December the 4th, first Saturday of December. And I've probably said enough. Good night. I had a little more, but I'll save it for another day.
Thank you so much, Mr. Park.
Are you going to take care of the convertibles that they're going to get for us for the Christmas parade? Well, you're going to come back for that, aren't you?
Oh, wow.
I'll pay, I'll go be in the morning. I'm going to be in time for it.
Enjoy it.
Thank you so much. I think we covered a lot. All right. Thank you. I'm looking for the do some. Yeah, I'm worried about you. You probably need to stay in Apex tonight. Uh-oh. Well, you better, you better call the mayor, let him know you home. He only wants to know how to get up and go to work tomorrow or work from home tomorrow.